Thank you, Alicia. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is Wednesday, July the 3rd, 2024. It is now 6:00 PM. The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. Enter ID 878-9125-8869. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637. This meeting is now called to order. Alicia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Evans is absent. Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
Councilmember Villegas.
Here.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Would you all please rise for the invocation led tonight by Brandon Hopkins of the Grace Community Church?
Well, thank you for having me. I'm Brandon Hopkins from Grace Community Church and I'll bless this meeting. Lord, we thank you for the city council members and their diligence to love our city and our people. Lord, we ask that you would bless our police department as they seek to protect the residents of our city. Lord, the same for the fire department as they seek to be protective as well. Lord, we thank you that you have blessed our city with people that do care about our community and our residents. And, Lord, we pray that our city would be safe, that it would be well taken care of and cared for. And so, as the council members do the business of the city, we pray, Lord, that they would be wise, that they would have your wisdom, that they would know right from wrong and be able to discern what is best in difficult situations. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led tonight by Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Ready, salute. I would like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, in this world with liberty and the best of all.
I will take a moment of privilege today to ask you all to keep Councilmember Anita Evans in your prayers as she is under the weather. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I'll ask my colleagues if there are any changes or if there's any members of the public wishing to make comments or changes to the agenda. Alicia, do we have any public comments?
There was one written public comment, Mayor, that was addressed to council earlier this morning. A copy has been emailed and printed for the council and a copy is at the podium if anyone wishes to obtain a copy.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further comments either on Zoom either.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Councilmember Villegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you much. There are no presentations tonight. We will now open public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until that hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Is anyone wishing to speak under public comment on something that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, no further comments, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, thank you much. We will now close public comment and move on to item A, public hearings. Item A1 is a public hearing to consider declaration of nuances and abatement order for overgrown weeds.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council and members of the public. I'm Lieutenant Adams with the Madera Police Department. With me is Claudia Mendoza, who is our code enforcement supervisor. She oversees our weed abatement and is heavily involved with that. So with that, I'll turn it over to her to present.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and members of the public. Here to present the public hearing to consider declaration of nuisances and abatement order for overgrown weeds. So, what is weed abatement? The purpose is to prevent fire hazards. It's only for vacant lots. Parcels will be abated by the contractor at the owner's expense. What is not included is fenced properties or properties with structures. We will address those but as a public nuisance, not in the weed abatement program. So, we usually handle, well, we handle all properties within the city limits. We do not handle properties that are in the county. Why is weed abatement important? Well, it prevents fires, protects the health and safety of the public, keeps rightaways accessible, prevents damages to abiding properties, discourages illegal dumping and encampments, reduces blight. So, this is a code section that is for weed abatement. And, you know, in summary, so overgrown lots, they have to be cleaned as well as the perimeter of the property, and anything that is in the public rightofway, like sidewalks, streets, need to be cleaned as well. If they do not clean it, then if it persists after the deadline is given, property owners will be subject to citations. And if the city abates it, then the cost associated with abatement and an administrative fee. So, this is our process. First, we can, we do research. Sometimes properties, they do get developed, sold, and they're no longer a vacant lot, which, you know, we take it off our list. So, we do that, conduct inspections. There's over 300 lots that we looked at this year. We'll issue a 45-day notice of violation to any of the ones that were in violation during those inspections. Also, there were some Facebook postings that we made as well to alert the public of what was going to be coming, just to kind of put the word out there and make sure everybody was aware of our deadlines. On May 30th was the deadline, and that's when we conducted our re-inspections. Tonight, we're having our public hearing for all those properties that have continued to be in violation. We will conduct abatement if everything is approved, and, you know, we'll have our cost recovery hearing for all those properties that we lean. So, we're here today. Staff inspected 318 vacant parcels with overgrown weeds. 300 were mowed down and in compliance, but tonight, it says 18 remain in violation, but it will be 17. One of them during this time has become into compliance. While there may be additional parcels, some may be partially developed and they're subject to the Public Nuisance Code. And if approved, we're hoping to start the abatement process on July 22nd. There's a pin map. It's showing all the vacant lots that we are going to be making a decision on tonight. So, all the red dots throughout the city. And these are the properties that we'll abate. So, our recommendation tonight is to conduct the public hearing and adopt a resolution to move forward with the abatement process. So, I did bring the case files with me if the council or public wishes to review it. I do have it available, and does the council have any questions?
Thank you, Claudia. Are there any members of public wishing to make comments on item A1, the public hearing to consider nuisance and abatement? Seeing none, do we have any public or written comments, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will now close public comment, and I'll bring it back to council for comments and motion and/or a motion. Shannon.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just one clarifying question. Which property was removed from the list?
So, it is vacant parcel 013012009.
Okay, so that's number three on the resolution.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. So, for this evening, council, if you're inclined to adopt the resolution, staff's updated recommendation is without item number three to exhibit A as it's been abated. Thank you.
Nice catch, Shannon. Job well done. My colleagues, is there anyone wishing to comment and/or make a motion?
I so moved to approve A1 with the exception of number three excluded from that.
I'll second that. Motion to approve item A1 by Mayor Protem Gallegos, second by Councilmember Montes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
We'll get working on that right away.
There you go. Thank you very much. Under item A2, consideration of an application for pre-zone Res 2023-2024 pertaining to 9.82 acres of property located on the northeast corner of Adelle and North D Streets. Is this under Mr. Smith's?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. As mentioned, this is an application, Adelle Street and D Street for a pre-zoning for the SEQA mitigation, mitigated negative declaration. The site is a 9.82 acre site that is bounded to the south by Adelle Street, to the west by D Street. The project before you is for the pre-zoning. This development site will go before the local area formation commission for annexation into the city that includes both the development site and two existing single-family homes. Typically, for the LAFCO, they require the annexation boundaries to be consistent and common sense boundaries that annex whatever properties would make a sensible boundary line, city limit line, so the two single-family homes are included with this development site. The pre-zoning proposes R1 for those two single-family homes and then PD 4,500 for the rest of the development area, which is one unit for every 4,500 square feet of site area. Planning Commission approved in June of this year the tentative maps associated with this project and also the precise plan that sets the development standards for the proposed subdivision. The general plan land use designation for the site and its surroundings is a low-density residential. The surrounding properties are also residential with farmland to the north and east. The zoning for the property, as previously mentioned, is PD 4,500 and R1, which is consistent with, which will be consistent with the general plan. This is the lotting pattern that was approved by Planning Commission for the individual, the 42 individual residential lots. The environmental review was carried out and a mitigated negative declaration was appropriate for the project with the public comment period ending prior to the Planning Commission hearing on June 10th. The recommendation is to waive the full reading and introduce by title only the ordinance by city council adopting the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring reporting program prepared for the purposes of the proposed project in accordance with the provisions of SEQA and approving the rezoning 2023-04, amending the zoning map and pre-zoning approximately 9.82 acres of property to PD 4,500 and R1 zoning districts. Thank you. That concludes staff's presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Robert. We will now open public comment on item A2, the consideration of application for pre-zone. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Please come up to the podium.
City Council, good evening. Jose Lemos, I am the civil engineer for the project, representing Six Star Nadine. And I just wanted to open it up for any questions you may have. This is a great opportunity to improve these nearly 10 acres into 42 single-family residences. And as I told the Planning Commission, this is going to be a good product for affordable homes and aesthetically pleasing homes. As a matter of fact, the developers that may be developing this, already developing your city and/or have in the past and are very excited about these lots in this area in general. So, if you have any questions, let me know.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments on this item?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, then I will close public comment and bring it back to council for any questions and/or comments and motion.
So, move to approve A2 as presented.
Second, and through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I read the title?
Oh, sorry. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The motion is to waive the full reading introduced by title only and ordinance to the city council, City of Madera, adopting mitigated negative declaration, SCH number 2024050494, the mitigated monitoring and reporting program prepared for the purposes of the proposed project in accordance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and approve rezon 20-2304, amending the official city map of the Madera zoning map to pre-zone approximately 9.82 acres of property, APNs 038, 090, 07, 08, 09, and 10 to the PD-4500, planned development, one unit for each 4,500 square feet of side area, and R1 residential, one unit for each 6,000 square foot of side area and zone districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. So, I have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem.
I'll second that.
Who was that second?
I'll second the motion.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Is there a challenge? Motion by, to approve item A2 by Mayor Protem Gallegos, second by Councilmember Rodriguez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. See, Mr. Lemos? We keep it simple here. Appreciate you. All right, we will now move on to the consent calendar, item B. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak or ask any questions regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for a questions and/or a motion.
Move to approve consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar under item B by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilmember Villegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Under item C, there are no workshops. Under item D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item D1 is a capital improvement code program, CIP, for fiscal years 2024-2025. Bitter?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and the public. My name is Ellen Bitter. I'm deputy city engineer, and tonight we are presenting your draft capital improvement program, this small document here. It was linked in the staff report and online as well, and if you have any specific questions, we should be able to go to them. This year's presentation is somewhat shorter than last year, especially if we could get the city attorney to deliver it for us if we've done like that. Because we're not going to have every department present their projects. So, we've focused on more active projects, though most departments are either present tonight here or online if you have any questions of their projects. You will hear from several team members that have significant roles in the projects or programs that are being discussed at the time. And at this point, I'll hand it over to the team leader, our city engineer, Keith Helmes.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm just going to go through the first few slides here. Coming up, we have the presentation overview. We're going to provide overview of the 24-25 through the 28-29 capital improvement program, also known as the CIP. Discuss project selection and prioritization process. Highlight projects from the past year. Introduce new projects added to the CIP. Review projects scheduled for this next fiscal year, 24-25, and receive input and direction. Capital improvement program. The capital improvement program or CIP is a multi-year planning document used by the city to identify capital improvement projects and coordinate the financing and timing of the projects. CIP covers a role in five-year period for purposes of allocating resources to priority projects and those with specific deadlines. Public input is received year-round in the public works department, the engineering department, transit, and parks departments as well. Input is also welcome during the presentation of this draft, CIP. In fact, we do appreciate any comments that we can get during this meeting. Continuing, projects in the CIP may change from year to year for a variety of reasons. Council prioritization, funding changes, staffing availability, project delays from design, rightofway, acquisition, et cetera. There are a number of ways that projects can be delayed. Emergency needs, grants preparation, state and federal discretionary funds, OES, Clean California. The CIP is adopted at the same time as the city budget. Any changes from the draft CIP will be highlighted at the time of the budget presentation. The CIP funding is annually appropriate, again coinciding with the city budget process. Final draft CIP with the city council approval will be submitted to the Planning Commission for review and to find the CIP in conformance with the general plan. That's general code section 650401. Some of the guiding documents that we have, the general plan, specific plans, MCTC's Active Transportation Plan, the ATP, that's usually going to be walking and biking projects, impact fee programs, utility master plans, of which we have three. Special studies, the downtown master plan, which is, the results of that are ongoing now. Staff review of current needs and available new funding sources, needs related to progressive growth, internal discussions on priorities, schedules, and funding, maintenance and other requests, needs identified through public outreach such as unmet transit need process conducted annually by the MCTC, and then, of course, risk assessments. One of the risk assessments was the review of the water and sewer pipes throughout the city. With that, can you go ahead and bring Ellen back up, and she's going to continue with the rest?
Thank you, Keith. So, we're going to start off with some of the highlights of projects that were either completed this past year or are currently underway, one of which, if you stop by our office, we have our front counter renovations. We received CDBG funding and some supplemental funds from the general fund to upgrade a counter to meet ADA requirements for clients that might, you know, need the proper facilities for reviewing their projects with us. We also completed an alley project. We paved 14 alleys across the city using the congestion management and air quality funds. It's an ongoing program that's been supported with the CMAT grant, and we'll see later in the presentation that we do have several more alley paving projects coming forward. I think everyone's familiar with our Loy Cook Water Tower Rehab Project. It will be, it has been unveiled, but this is showing the extent of the work, both interior and exterior, full rehabilitation plus some seismic upgrades for this key component of our infrastructure. We do expect it to be completed this month, and you may be getting the council acceptance request either later July or possibly August for that. Our department assisted with PD and developing and building their new parking lot adjacent to their headquarters, and so it's almost close to being finished. I think they need to get their electric gates, you know, final pieces for that, and then it will be open for their use for their employees and other features. We also completed a phase of water meter installations. This particular project focused on replacing our large manual read meters that were old, inefficient, not reading properly. We also captured a couple locations that did not have water meters at all. This helps to meet our commitment to being completely metered by 2026 and provides a tool to show the owners if they're using too much water, they can find where their leaks are and identifying water waste in the system. Other projects we're familiar with, we actually, you know, had made great progress on the design and putting the project out to bid for the lining for our Avenue 13 sewer trunk mains. So, we, with a few hiccups along the way with our emergency repairs that we'll be discussing later, but we are pleased that we were able to award the project, and it is moving very quickly forward. So, next I'll have Joseph come up and talk about his projects.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, guests. Joe Abear presenting some of the accomplishments for the Parks Department this year for CIP projects. A lot of these projects that I'll cover, I think I did a count, I think I've talked about them at least three or four times before this body in the past, but we're real proud of these accomplishments, and there was a lot of effort that went into it. PK 65 Centennial Park Pool Complex, this is, we re-tiled and replastered the lap and dive pools and put new tile. Project also consisted of replacing the railing on ADA ramp and grab rails along the pools. This project, actually, we had a few setbacks and mostly because of weather, and then we made the decision at the last minute to do the rails, but the pool's up and running. We've got a lot of kids out there, a lot of people participating in this summer, so the heat, we're glad we beat the, got it done before the heat came upon us. The other is, I know a lot of you are out there for when we actually did the McNally Park rehab. This was a big darn deal for the city. I know when I first took this job, this was probably the park I heard about the most from concerned citizens and former council people to what can we do to make this much better? So, what we did was replace the playground equipment area, put a new safety perimeter fencing and new basketball courts out there, and actually, it's, I see a lot of people out there using them these days when I drive past. The other, this was a big project, and I think we just kind of closed this off a couple weeks ago. This was the Fresno River Trail cleanup, and this had to do with the Clean California local grant funding. We did litter abatement along the river, Fresno River, as well as put in new playground equipment at Riverview Park, trail restoration at Vernon McCullough River Trail, new trash receptacles and motion capable exercise equipment. And again, these projects were actually kind of a, I want to give kudos to my team. We were doing this with kind of a skeleton crew. We had a lot of learning curves to do all of these, but I think we did a great job. But I think we did a great job. And, you know, they're not here, but I know they'll see this recording if they're not watching, but they did an excellent job of getting this done. I didn't do this all by myself. And so this was a, this was a big, big deal for us to get, get these things done. The other is, actually, I'm looking at Councilwoman Mahia. This is one that I know you and I have talked about quite a bit. This is the sun, this is a project that's coming up for the Sunrise Rotary Sports Complex. This project will kick off on August 5th, 30 days to complete. We have, that we're going to have a pre-construction meeting in a couple of weeks. We should be, you know, ready to go. And I know you and I have had a lot of discussions about this. The good thing about this project is we have the equipment. It's just one that's kind of been dormant for a while. We had to go through a process to replace some. The equipment's been here for about five years. We had to replace some of the equipment that became damaged because of weather or what have you. But we're ready to go. The other good thing about this too is we don't have to replace the fence. We can just refurb it. So that's a feather in our cap. And so that was one of the things, you know, since I've been here. Well, I like to count our lucky stars that we got this done. So this is going to be, be nice. And so, you know, I can't wait to have the ribbon cutting and kick this off with you. This one actually is, we've talked about this. This is James Talbot Park, which was previously called Olive Park. And this, the funding came from Prop 68, statewide park development and commuter revitalization program. This park, as you can see, this is gonna, we're hoping this to be the bellwether park for the city. You can see it's going to be more vibrant colors, at least the concept is what we're thinking. We're, right now, we're in the process of still working through the concept. We have a little bit of setbacks because of road construction. But we just met with engineering yesterday. We, I think we have a path forward of what we're going to do. The, we are hoping our target right now is to have this completed by June 30th of 2025. But we're also going to put in for an extension just to give us a little more time in case we run into things like weather or things like that, that we don't know. So that's, that's it for parks.
Yeah, I'm going to wait till the presentations.
Okay, so now we're moving into this next year in our CIP. And in your staff report, there was a table listing 28 projects. They carry over from prior years, scheduled for construction this year. They total next, nearly $68 million. All of those projects are either nearly complete with plans and specs or they are shelf-ready to go. So we, we have every confidence that we will meet at least the 14 of those 28 projects that have specific funding encumbrance, meaning they have to have a contract awarded or actual completion deadlines before 2025. But we do think that we'll achieve more than just those 14. So it's going to be a very busy year and following years. In both our department, our inspection and construction team, and then Public Works gets to maintain it all after it's built. So as I noted, these projects are fully funded and they are nearly shelf-ready. For example, yesterday, we got the final bidding documents for our New Well 37. Handing it over again to our assistant engineer Alexis Ramundo. He, he indicated he hasn't actually physically presented in person. So this is a great opportunity for him. He is becoming our road guy. And that's what he's going to talk about is how we study the roads and how we determine the priorities for those projects.
Right. Thank you, Ellen. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. So for pavement condition index update, updated in 2016, the pavement condition study of arteries and collectors, previous report indicated the average PCI of the collected and arterial streets were 68. Consultants drove every street and collect data and measures the stresses such as potholes, cracking, rutting, and ripidity, identify areas needed immediate repair, and provided recommendations for maintenance and rehabilitations. And that happened this year as well. Right. Payment condition and this update. For each street segment in the city, the PCI reports list the length, the number of lanes, functional classifications, day of study, and a PCI rating from 0 to 100. So this is a network summary statistics. The fun signal classifications, which is arterial collector, residential, and local. We have the total centerline miles, total lane miles, and PCI. Total PCI for, that was updated, 61. The average PCI of the arterial collectors in 2024 is 65. It was, if it were to be compared to 2016 average PCI. So here's a PCI map of the condition. As you can see, it's based on the categories. Category 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Each colored indicates the condition of the roads. Pavement Management Plan. The pavement management plan is, is a strategic method of assisting planning and scheduling broad maintenance measure, optimal performance and longevity, decision tree, and funding available. The planning recommends projects to achieve their identified goal. PCI of 65 in five years. We'll be running scenarios with and without a renewal of measure T. Also, we'll be using the PMP to identify projects for 3.2 million in improvements, addition to the projects shown on the following slide. So here's a map of the city road projects. We do have, five projects are coming up in the next few years. City Project R 79, City Project R 80, City Project R 81, City Project R 98, and City Project R 104. And these are all road projects. And without, pass it back to Ellen. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. So we're kind of excited because we'll be able to implement our new pavement management plan to identify what projects we should build with that 3.2 million that we haven't fully programmed yet. Some other key street projects. Of course, we've pledged 3 million to participate with Caltrans on the Yosemite Avenue, State Route 145 rehabilitation. And primarily, we're participating in the complete street portion of that project. Another project that we've discussed before is the Almond Avenue Connection. That is going to move forward once we finish completion of our stadium corridor traffic study. We're probably about 75% through that process. And when it's complete, it'll come before council with the recommendations coming out of that study. We are moving forward with a plan line study to evaluate what the potential right-of-way for that Almond Avenue Connection would be. So when we do identify what's needed on the stadium side, we will be ready to move forward also on the Pine Street side, where we have to kind of jog around the MID structure there. The other project is the Olive Avenue Widening. We awarded.
Finish your presentation, then we. But I already have you down on the.
I understand, but we have several departments presenting. I'd hate to go all the way back.
Right, in the past, we've, we've broken them up and been able to ask questions in between.
I beg your pardon, but what we're going to do is let them make their presentation. I have you on cue, and I'll get back to you as soon as we do that.
Yeah, I'd like to do that because it's important to, I want us to understand the payment, payment condition index. There was a number that was delivered out there. Just want to make sure where we stand as far as the city. I'd like to make that question, if I may, if this council would allow me to. I would like to make that.
If you allow me, can we do this in the middle of presentations? Make a motion at this appropriate time to make a motion?
It's a workshop.
And usually, it should have been stated that we were going to hold our questions until after presentations. Because in the past, we've done every department and asked questions before we move on so that we don't forget in between their presentation what we need to ask.
From a purely legal perspective, council members can make procedural motions at any time during the matter. And generally, the mayor has discretion as chair whether or not to accept questions during a presentation, unless a majority of the city council members present want to go a different direction. So if four members of the city council tonight wanted to ask questions as time went on, they would have the authority to make that motion and do that over the chair's objection.
Thank you, Shannon.
So what we'll do then is we'll go back to, I believe, is Mr. A. Bear. Is he still here? Joe?
Yeah, there we go. And I believe Council, Mayor Protem had a question regarding parks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me find it now. So Parks Director Aber, my question is, on the Town and Country project, page 10, it talked about installation of ADA compliant playground. Is that going to be where the structure is now? That we're just going to add additional swing sets that are ADA compliant?
On the Town and Country?
Yes.
No, we're gonna, we're, we're going to make sure we're ADA compliant when we put in.
Okay, and then it says that we're going to add swing sets. So the swing sets, that's why we're adding them, because we're not ADA compliant in that area.
We're, we're just going to add swing sets. It's not.
That one structure on Granada.
Right.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, I only have a question on the parks. It was more so on the PCI, but I'll come back to that. Since you're up there, Joe, I will ask you regarding the Town and Country. You have that projection for 2425 fiscal year. And if I see this correctly, this is the, when we're talking about paving, this is the Town and Country Trail. Is that correct? That's projected for this year?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Yeah, and actually, we're gonna, what we're doing is we don't have enough swings over at the park right now. And that's really our plan, is if we have extra money, is to expand, is to use that extra to put in the play structure. That's, that's the goal. And so we'll see how well we negotiate for the, the trail. So I can answer both your questions. So that's, that's the, the plan right now.
Thank you.
Going back to Councilmember Rodriguez, were you going to ask something regarding the other question?
Yes, but I think there may be a park question. Did you have a park question, Councilwoman Mahia?
Mine is regarding, regarding alleys, and it's for.
That'll be my question.
Okay, I'll go after you.
Yes, so the PCI index that was presented by Ramundo. Thank you, Ramundo. I appreciate that. So I understood that the PCI right now for the City of Madera Road is 68. Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly? 61, okay. The targeted PCI we want to get to, for the city to be at par with its streets and roads would be what?
We were aiming for 70, but for now, 65, as it will take a while just to reach, to at least to reach 70 right now.
The, the important number that you said is in 2016, we were hovering over 65?
Yes, that was only for Arterias and Collectors. We did not survey the local streets. This year, we did do the whole street, the whole city network. And that was, that's the reason why we're at 61. But if you were just to compare it to Arterias and Collectors, we were at 65 this year for Arterias and Collectors compared to in 2016, which was 68.
Perfect. Now, I understand that when it comes to the PCI, what is the standard? Where do we want to be? Is it 70? Is it 68, 61, 65? What's the number we want to see our roads at?
That's a great question. I would believe 70 to maintain it. The statewide in California, I believe, is 60, 62, 63 right now. But I think 70 will probably be the best to maintain it.
And the reason why I wanted you to say that, not necessarily coming from you, but the reason why is because we're, our roads are substandard at the moment, correct? And this is also to, to highlight how important our measure T dollars are. And I can't say this enough. Some of those monies do go to help with some of these projects that we have. This five-year plan that we have is important for us because that prioritizes what we want to do with those monies. And right now, if we're at a subpar PCI, then that can only tell you that we're behind. But there's not enough money to get us to the 70. And if there is, can you please highlight where it's at? And it's not a question for you. I'm just saying, I don't think we have that money. So thank you very much. Appreciate it, Ramundo, for answering my questions.
Oh, thank you.
Council, he was going to answer.
He is going to answer. Oh, you were going to answer.
Councilmember Mahia.
Thank you, Mayor. This question is for Ellen. You had mentioned during the part about the alleyways. There were 14 that were repaired, I believe. Or I'm wondering if what you, what was done about the roads, where all of the roads were surveyed in Madera, is that, does that also happen with the alleys? And I mentioned that because there's one alley that's on L Street, between 4th Street and 5th Street, that's complete road. So I'm wondering, how do these alleys get on a list to be repaired? Like, and what's the priority?
So the alleys are not surveyed as part of the PCI study. They're evaluated separately in-house. We track alleys that are paved versus unpaved. We keep a database. And then for the CMAC funds, which is the air quality benefiting, projects that benefit air quality. So with regard to alleys, it's how much dust we can mitigate by paving the alley. So it's triggered by the vehicle usage. So if it's an alley that has more vehicle use than maybe a block over, the alley that has the most vehicle use is what would be prioritized over that. So coming on our next projects that we'll show a little bit later on, that we have, we've broken them up into quadrants of the city. So we were successful in getting funds for three quadrants. So we'll focus in those quadrants and we'll apply that methodology of the highest vehicle use on the dirt alley. Now, if it's a paved alley that needs some love, that falls under the maintenance program from Public Works for those.
Thank you. So if it's not surveyed in the same way, there was a resident that had a concern for that alley, would they just contact you? Or how would that get on a list?
They can contact us. They can contact Public Works. So if they've got a concern with the condition of their alley, but maybe it's not qualifying for one of our projects, then Public Works can go out and do some temporary treatment if they need to mitigate potholes or particularly bad condition for, that prevents them from fully utilizing it.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
I'm going to refer to Councilwoman Rodriguez because mine's going to go back to the beginning of the presentation. I think his question is about this. Is that correct?
Really, it's more about staff report. It didn't provide us with the PCI presentation that Ramundo did. So that's why I think it triggered for questions is because that in itself, I mean, we want to know, right? So I would, I would just advise that we have those so that we can reserve those questions for the end. Thank you.
Very, I will point out that when, so we are receiving the data from our consultant. They haven't published their draft report yet. So we will actually do a focused presentation to council with the results of the study and the report and the different scenarios that we've talked about as well tonight.
Thank you, Ellen.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Garcia. First two are just comments on CD 0003. I'd like to thank the Engineering Department for putting on the CIP is the change in the sign of the RDA sign into engineering. We have a lot of our residents that go and say, go to engineering, and they see RDA and they keep going. So I'm glad to see that was on the CIP to change that logo sign. The second comment was the future development, seeing that on the CIP. Thank you for that, to show us the numbers on that and having a page for that. I think that helps us see that also. The question I do have is on R 0082. It's the almond extension from Pine to Stadium. I looked at the last year's CIP to this year's CIP, and the numbers are still matching up, but it's been moved another year. Is there a reason why we keep pushing it another year when this has been on our books for several years?
One of the reasons is we want to get the recommendations from the corridor study. Another reason is it kind of gets pushed back in the queue just because of the number of projects that we have to deliver. So, but once we have the full recommendation, then we can advance it using our on-call list for an engineer for that.
Okay, so we're looking at now, not punching that through until 2627? Is that the projection that I'm seeing?
That would be, I would say, a reasonable number because of right-of-way. We have to purchase right-of-way, and we have to also work with MID and their pipeline and undergrounding that too.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. That's all, Mayor, at this time.
Okay, let's see. Okay. I'll move on into the traffic signals, still under road and street-funded projects. We have six traffic signal projects, and they'll be shown on a map on the next slide. Three of those six had been previously advertised, but we had to reject the bids because one of the locations came, there are three combined in one project. One of them came in grossly over budget. And so we had to bring it back to our engineering team, our consultant, and first understand what, why it was so high. And we've reconfigured the contract specifications so that it'll be a more reasonable bid. So we expect those to go out very soon. The Lake and Sherwood Traffic Signal is moving into the final bid document phase. We met with the consultant this week. And so we've directed them to prepare the final plans and the specifications so we can advertise that. We also have the fourth Lake Central Intersection Project. It's, it's a combination intersection improvement, and it's a new traffic signal. If you may recall, we, it's been a topic of study for the last several years as it was being considered for either a roundabout or a. or a traffic signal. And, um, back in 2020, I believe, uh, the item was brought to council and, um, the costs for the roundabout, were nearly double for the intersection improvements than a traffic signal and also, um, costs and the additional right-of-way and, and then the impact to those properties that, where we needed the right-of-way. So the decision was made to move forward with the traffic signal there. It did take a bit of a backseat because we wanted to see if the proposed changes on Yosemite Avenue and traffic flow, if that was going to impact what was projected to arrive at the Fourth Lake Central Intersection. And, um, I think we've gotten past that. And, uh, again, we're working with the consultant and directing them to move forward with, um, those plans to go to final bid-ready plans. Uh, the last signal, the Olive and Knox, um, is a new signal and this is part of the project that was awarded at the intersection of Olive and Knox, um, and in conjunction with Parks Department. Um, so we'll, um, be, the signal probably won't be in place before the project start or before the park starts construction, just because we're seeing lead times of up to nine months for traffic signal equipment. So we get it ready, we award it, and then we have to wait. So, but the road part will be under construction and hopefully complete before the park starts. So again, here is the map of those, uh, new traffic signals, Cleveland and Granada. And the, what we call the, the Hoppy Intersection, Howard, Olive, Pine and Yosemite will be upgraded. And, um, this D and South is receiving a new traffic signal. It's a four-way stop now, Lake and Sherwood. And then here's, Fourth Lake and Central, and then Olive and Knox, uh, down by the park.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Uh, yes, Ellen, thank you. Since we're on those traffic signals, I do want to have, I do have a question. So, um, I, I think we all can agree that, uh, the, the traffic signal over on Fourth, uh, Lake and Central is, is much needed, warranted. However, when we first came to this topic, um, we didn't, we weren't aware that, uh, Caltrans would come back with the road diet on 145. That would create some, uh, traffic that would go possibly back into Lake or, so the question that I have is now that we have this road diet, we have this traffic signal coming on, onboard. Do we revisit that intersection for a possible roundabout? Or, you know, just to alleviate or mitigate the traffic that we will have from this road diet? Or will there be any additional traffic?
You covered it, or, okay. Keith's been more involved with the Yosemite project, so.
Full disclosure, Ellen, I reached out to Keith and I had asked him this and I want to ask this again so that not only my colleagues can listen to it, but, you know, maybe people that are in the, on the audience that may want to, you know, they might want to know what's going on with this particular traffic signal.
Sure. Um, thanks for the question and, and I'll go ahead and revisit a, a few things from the past and then go ahead and touch on the Yosemite project itself. So Ellen was, uh, discussing some of what was going on at that intersection relative to the selection of the traffic signal versus a roundabout. The roundabout, there were, there were the two factors. One was cost. It was, I don't know if it was but double, but it was at least a million dollars more to go ahead and do a roundabout. Uh, perhaps more importantly, the, the right-of-way impacts were significant. There's a house on the, uh, northeast corner of the intersection. Going back to the notes from the public meeting from, I guess, 2020, uh, the, the public meeting from about 2020, the owner there had indicated he was looking at trying to go ahead and get his house put on the, on the National Register of Historic Places, I guess. When you look at the impacts from the roundabout, the, uh, the, the sidewalk going around the roundabout came within probably a couple feet or so of the house, which meant that there was going to be some impact on it. It was, at the very least, it was environmental. Beyond that, the owner would probably be frustrated by people walking by the house and tapping on the walls they walked past. It was, it was, on the drawings, it looked that close. Now, moving forward to the impacts of the potential impacts of the 145 project. We, when we started this process a couple of years ago, when we, when we decided to go, when council decided to go ahead and contribute $3 million to the project, we didn't have really any good numbers for what the, the traffic would do through there. As, as recall, we stated, we didn't really know. It, it could have some impacts in terms of diverting traffic. We did eventually get something from Caltrans, which was very weak in terms of modeling. Uh, it, it gave us an idea of what kind of traffic would be diverted, uh, to the, uh, to the Lake Street, uh, corridor. Uh, then I think even more recently, within the last year or so, we did get some additional data. But that data showed was, um, the impact, the increases were not that significant. The model was determining that traffic would shift over to, to Cleveland or D Street as well as Lake Street, but it wasn't, but it wasn't something that was saying all, it's all shifting over. So I'm not, I'm not sure that that would be, um, the impetus for switching to a roundabout. Uh, staff is, of course, would be prepared to go ahead and make that change, um, subject to identifying additional funds. The, um, try to revisit. I also looked at, uh, the impacts from queuing. The roundabout, uh, queuing and the level of service. The, the roundabout had a level of service B in terms of, of traffic delays. Uh, projections for like year 2040. The traffic signal had a level of service C. Both are good. Uh, the things that, the, the thing that concerned me most about that particular location was queuing. On the northbound approach to the intersection, uh, I think everybody who, who's driven through there in the last year, two, three, maybe five, sees that traffic can back up fairly significantly on the northbound. Uh, that can be, I think it can be several hundred feet. There was one day I went by where the traffic, I think, was backing all the way up to Yosemite itself. Now, that, that, that is largely based upon a dysfunctional intersection that has five legs on it. One of the legs doesn't really do anything anymore, but it still has four legs coming in at an odd angle. And it's confusing to motorists. So they, they, they take turns. It's much less efficient than a normal four-way intersection. That's part of what's happening right now. When a traffic signal goes in or a roundabout, it's going to take that location and make it a lot more efficient. Now, and let's see. Trying to remember all the thoughts that I had with regard to this, this location. What we are looking at right now is we're trying to get our traffic engineer to take everything that's been provided from Caltrans and come up with their own professional opinion on the impacts. Um, we've, we've taken the model and to some degree, we've set it aside. We are going to do additional counts on the intersection itself and the, and the traffic engineer is going to be doing, I hate to say, kind of a, I'll, I'll call it a seat of the pants. They're going to look to go ahead and see what's happening at this point in time with that intersection in terms of the traffic volumes. Then they're going to take what they know about the corridor and see what else, what the additional impacts might be. And then they'll be giving us some recommendations. One of those is, uh, potential for dual left turn lanes on the northbound approach to the intersection. Right now, there's only one proposed. And you, you double up on that, you should be able to go ahead and reduce the, either the, the queues backing up or improve the overall level of service of the intersection when you add any Yosemite traffic that might find its way to that location.
Thank you, Keith. And
Sure.
Just to clarify, staff had suggested that, um, you know, the level of service would be a B at the time with the traffic signal. And obviously the cost, a million dollars versus $2 million. We have it on the list.
I think it's 1.3 versus about 2.5 or something like that.
Thank you. But we have it on the list for this fiscal year, 24, 25. Now, if for some reason, we, we, we come to the conclusion that a roundabout would be a better level of service, that would put out this project how far out? Until we find the source?
I think we would have find ourselves going back through the environmental. Uh, as I recall, we, after we got through the selection, we went into a specific environmental relative to a traffic signal rather than a roundabout. We would probably have additional public meetings to revisit that. Uh, I, I.
Identifying the source of funds, right?
Identify a source of funds. Some of the funds that we have on the project are, are CMAC congestion management and air quality. Those funds, well, I'm not sure. They, they could conceivably be pulled back from the, from the MCTC. They, they were tied to, uh, uh, to timelines in terms of getting, completing them. Uh, we also do have RSTP funds tied to that. Those are, those dollars are also, um.
So one could say, and this is how just government in general works that way, right? Environmental, you have to go through studies. You have to get all that stuff done. Let's just say, government, not City of Madera, can go five years. We, maybe two, three years out. Is that realistic in, in how far out we could be with this project? Because I know we've talked about this since 2020 and we're now just getting a signal light. We know the urgency because you've driven by it, I've driven by it. And we know there's got to be some type of traffic flow, some type, some type of mitigation for that traffic. And that signal at the time, staff is recommending that this is the best, um, traffic mitigation at the moment as a traffic signal. Due to time?
I, I, I recall, I do not recall whether staff recommended the traffic signal or we went through the public process.
No, we, we approved it because
Yes.
it was an increase in cost and again, right-of-way. And then we had other environmentals that potentially could have, um, impeded us from moving forward faster. Again, that was four years ago. We have this on our list. I guess my question is if we don't move on a traffic signal, how much further can we drive this out?
Uh, two to three years minimum.
Okay.
Thank you. We're, we're going to, yeah, as I said, we'll start over on a number of things. We'll, 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 we'll be into obtaining right-of-way. Um, I can probably say that we would not have friendly sellers or willing sellers. Uh, so it could be that we go into an eminent domain process. There's a relatively decent chance of, of eminent domain.
Thank you, Keith.
Sure.
Councilmember Montes.
Yeah, so, um, I think I like the direction that, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez is going, because my recollection of the meetings was, uh, it seemed at least like staffer or the consultant was heavily favoring the roundabout. It was a better, although it was a more expensive option, uh, it was going to provide a, a better level of service. And one of the things that I don't, wouldn't like for us to do is to go ahead with the signal light and then to have to figure out later because it's failing or it's not providing the level of service, because the signal light was a C and the roundabout was a B, right? Yes, it's, it's more cost. And, and it sounds like you're already doing some of this, but I, I would be in favor of, you know, having something, you know, regarding this brought back this, because even the environmental, it's not going to be a complete, like, start from zero on the environmental, right?
No, it, it wouldn't be a start from zero.
And, and I feel, I feel like the, the findings would be in favor because you're not queuing as much. So, uh, some of the impacts would be mitigated like, um, for, um, you know, environmental, uh, like smog and stuff like that, right? Because you're not sitting there idling your car. You're, maybe you're slowing down, but you're still going through. So you're really never stopping.
Sure. Uh, as you said, I was trying to remember with the results of the, uh, of, of, of the smog and the emissions.
Yeah, no, we're not expecting you to remember that.
Measures of effectiveness.
Four years ago.
Sometimes I have things in my head. I don't know how they're there, but, um, I, I don't recall those, those particular measures of effectiveness being substantially different between the traffic signal and the, uh, and the roundabout. I could be completely wrong, but, um.
I think it's worth exploring and looking, looking back into that because of, because of the variables and the facts have changed, or we do anticipate that there's going to be, uh, more traffic, even though, um, because we asked that of Caltrans and, and, and that's already been approved as well, right? The, the road diet. I'm not saying go back on the road diet. I'm saying, um, kind of look at that again, you know, uh, measure twice, cut once. I know I felt like we kind of beat that to death. But again, the facts have changed, right? Uh, uh, things have changed since then. We haven't implemented, um, we're not going to start from ground zero if we go back to that. Again, and it seemed from my recollection, I may not have been in the loop completely on everything, but it seemed like, staff and at least the, um, consultant were heavily favoring the roundabout. Some of the community didn't have, didn't like it. The, the person that was going to be impacted the most, I understand that. Um, but yeah, things can change. The, their property may have appreciated. So they may, they may change their mind if, you know, it's going to be a higher cost, right?
Should be told, I was, I, I was hoping the roundabout would work. And I was, uh, I was a little bit, uh, I'll say the word down when, whenever, when I realized where, where we were with regard to the cost and the, the impacts. But if, if it's council's desire, we can go back and check with a consultant and determine, um, what they think it will take to go ahead and get, uh, get to the end game. We'll, we'll look at the impacts on funding and the like. It, it, um, just work through it and give you that feedback.
People did it for me, Keith. Keith, is you saying that you saw the line all the way back to Yosemite? That's scary.
I don't know if that was a one time, just. I don't, I don't really believe in coincidences when it comes to cars, but, um, I've been doing traffic a long time, so.
Councilmember Villegas?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Keith, I have a question for the signal lights. So it's going to be one in Roosevelt and Olive and the other one on Knox and, uh, Olive? That's what I'm going to send it?
Yeah, I may let Ellen go ahead and jump back to that unless it's,
Okay.
unless it's a specific question that I know about those.
Uh, that's correct, uh, Councilmember. The, there is a new traffic signal going in with the improvements at Olive and Knox. And then when we finish the Olive Avenue widening project from Gateway all the way to Knox, it also includes a new traffic signal at Roosevelt.
Yeah, because I want a Roosevelt and, and Olive. It's, uh, it should be, uh, a good, a very good, uh, thing for the people because a, a lot of people cross to go take the kids to Sierra Vista. But it's not there right now. So, uh, and that's supposed to go a little to the, to the east and go to the crosswalk. For some people, they don't, just don't, don't do it. And it's, so that's going to be one Roosevelt and Olive and the other one and Knox and, and Olive, right?
That's correct. Yeah. And unfortunately.
That was my question.
Yeah, we can't, um, put a signal at Roosevelt at the moment because the widening is going to be so significant.
Yeah, it's more, uh, work.
We'd have to build it and then move them again.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the longest is in a, uh, that's the most, uh, needed right there in Roosevelt and Olive. There's a lot of people crossing in the morning right there taking the kids across, but it's a lot of traffic in the morning. And I'm hours walking over there in the morning. So I seen it. But, you know, the longest is, is, is in the schedule already. So, and I know it was. So I just want to make sure it's, it's going to be two. So that, that'd be better anyway. So.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
If I may, Mayor, ask for some further clarification regarding the Lake Forest Central. So, um, going, asking the consultant to look, take a second look, um, and I'm going to wear my project manager hat, is gonna probably, they're probably going to want some additional compensation for that. Is that, um, an agreeable approach of council to, um, put some additional investment in the engineering phase for this work?
So, so that would beg the question, do we need to make that decision now? Or do we need to say, bring this back to us so we can make a educated decision about the cost?
Yeah, we would be bringing any kind of contract amendment to you, but I just want to say, advise that, that it will come at a cost and, and if it's worth us going back to the consultant to get that cost. So I.
Here's what.
Member Rodriguez?
Here's what I, my, my humble opinion is that if we go with the traffic signal to find out later on, 10, 15 years from now, what is the cost of, you know, having us put the burden on the people that are going through those traffic signals that are still not able to get that level of service? And if you put a price to it, I don't know that, uh, you know, this, I don't know what the amount is. So we don't know what it is. Is it $2 million to revisit? Is it $1 million?
It would not be that nature.
To the mayor's point, I think that if we can bring back something, I think it'll be easier for us to
Make a decision.
make a decision and say, you know what, it's worth that. And at least to explore it. The Councilmember Montes' point, I think we want to revisit as facts have changed. And, you know, we want to provide the best level of service for that, or, or area, especially, I mean, you're taking out one leg of it, but you still have four other, uh, um, crossroads there that, that are going to impact the, the area. So.
Thank you.
Is that?
It does. Yeah. So we'll, um, first order work, we'll revisit with the consultant to get their take on.
New policy, roundabouts everywhere.
Thank you.
Hey, I love roundabouts.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you. I had a question about the roundabout. So Keith will probably have to come back again because, uh,
because another councilmember went off track here. So the question I have, Keith, is you did mention that the roundabout is kind of tight and that we were looking at intimate domaining certain property. And one gentleman has, is looking to historically landmark his property. If that is a historical landmark, we will not be able to domain it. Therefore, are we able to still do a roundabout without taking over that area?
I'm not aware of the gentleman moving forward with that. That was something he mentioned and that, that may be one of those things that you mentioned in public meetings that you never follow through on. But I, I, I think that he very much wanted, would like to do that. So assuming he's done that, it, it really depends on our true impacts on that property. My view of the drawing showed are the sidewalk getting very close to the house.
Okay, thank you. We good to move to the next?
Please.
Okay, sidewalks. Yay. Yeah, we have a lot of sidewalks coming this year. Three miles alone with our AHSC grant funded project. It's got a deadline of completion by June of 2025. So that is actively moving forward. We also have two other CMAC projects that are sidewalk only. One along Schnorr, which is the blue sidewalk here. R93 is near Washington School. It's here in the pink. All of the red areas are that one AHSC funded project. And just a little piece of yellow that in conjunction with the street project, we're also filling in a gap of missing sidewalk on Schnorr, this yellow piece here. Okay, water projects. So funding sources are primarily our water funds rate pair. And we have had the ability to use our American Rescue Plan funds for many of our planned water projects. We are moving forward with that new well, 37, which is on Granada Drive, north of Cleveland. We have identified the need to replace the water mains in Yosemite Avenue. Well, there's many that need to be replaced, but we wanted to get ahead of Caltrans coming through with their repaving. So we packaged up a project specifically for any water mains on State Route 145. And that one has to be completed before Caltrans moves forward with their project. And we are moving forward with the design for the northeast water storage tank. It, it's a good year to get to completion for that. So we won't see construction activity this year on that, maybe perhaps next year. And then additionally, we have several other water main replacement projects all over town and those are noted here on this map. And yeah, the, the project I mentioned on State Route 145 is part of this lighter blue project. I, oh, I see we got competing blues here, but, but that's the one that's definitely moving forward as one of those 14 projects that we must deliver this year. And I'll move on to our sewer projects, again, funded primarily with ARPA funds and our sewer rate pair. The big one is of course the Avenue 13 CIPP lining project under construction right now. We also have a planned improvement of the, some pump upgrades at the South Street Lift Station. And actually I probably aired in working with the staff that prepared this. It's the Fairgrounds Lift Station. That is the one that's moving forward. We are close to having that bid ready as well. And then there's the pink marks on the map or purple is a pipeline replacement project that was identified through our risk assessment that we did. There's a handful of new projects that council has not seen before in the CIP and that's what this next section highlights. I guess before I move on, were there any questions on the sewer water?
No.
Okay. As I noted, so here's the new alley projects that we have. It's the southwest quadrant. And so I would call that would be Yosemite Avenue and, or Howard Road and 99 would be southwest. So unpaved alleys in that area. Northeast would be Highway 99 and Yosemite Avenue as the boundary. So everything north and east of those roadways and northwest again. So that would be north of Howard Road and west of Highway 99. We were funded for those particular quadrants. So what's nice is that the dollars get stretched farther. So they're not competing against one side of town versus the other side of town based on the vehicles that use the alleyways. So these will probably be designed this next year, probably won't see them go to construction until the following year. This was a project that was funded with CDBG funds and it is to upgrade and pave, rehabilitate the parking facilities for these various city, heavily used city facilities at Pan Am Center, Sunrise Rotary Sports Complex, the John Wells Youth Center, the Frank Bergon Senior Center and the Gateway Rotary Parking Lot. That will also include addressing the issues of the trees lifting the pavement there along the curb. So that will be addressed at that same time. Because that is CDBG, that does have the funding deadlines. So that one should be hopefully out to construction by the end of this fiscal year. We were also awarded funding for more sidewalk projects through, it's a new funding source. It's escaping me right now, but it's similar to CMAC and it was the same competitive process. And so we will be putting some sidewalks along Town and Country Park that is along Howard Road and, and going around the corner of Granada. So there's that, where the traffic signal is, we're missing sidewalk on that, those pieces of the park and the apartments that are there. So that red project will fill in that gap. We also have planned improvements to fill in curb gutter and sidewalk. And, and this is a separate area of the city. It's on D Street and Clark. So that's not a huge project, but it's a fill in project there for sidewalks. And then on Clinton, along between Tozer, heading into the Sunrise Rotary Sports Complex. So it's, it's the city street part that is also going to receive sidewalk. And again, that'll be designed this year, probably constructed next. We received funding for a local road safety development plan and it's funded by Safe Routes for, Safe Routes for All grant and matched with LTF funds. Having this local road safety plan will then allow us to compete for other safety grants. So there are some grants we're not eligible to, to apply for yet because we don't have a plan in place. Lastly, this item was at, I think your last council meeting where we approved the RMRA project for 2425. And it was some residential streets we were focusing on because, you know, their PCIs are even lower than the collectors and arterials. So, but that project coupled with all the other street projects is, looks like a lot more well-rounded approach to our street rehab. And lastly, we have packaged an improvement project out at the wastewater treatment plant where we are relocating the headworks and so we can, and the screen facility so they can maintain it better, much more efficient, trying to get away from that compacted treatment in that concrete structure where all the effluent currently arrives. And there's some other components to that project as well, primarily funded with ARPA and the sewer funds. That one should be going out to bid this fall, late fall. So it's an accelerated project with our consultant for that. So that, that does conclude my presentation of the projects and the new projects. I can take questions now and just to recap, we're looking for a minute order accepting the proposed projects in the draft CIP for fiscal years 2425 to fiscal years 2829 and authorizing the city engineer to submit the draft five-year CIP to the planning commission for determination of conformity with the general plan.
Thank you, Ellen. It's quite a bit, quite a bit, you know, a little bit of time. We will now open public comment. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Are there any Zoom or written comments? Alicia?
Does he want to speak? We do have some, a caller. Justin? You may unmute yourself to address the council, please.
Yes. Good afternoon, council. I'm calling on behalf of the Lake Intersection, Olive, Fourth Intersection area. And the reason I'm making the call is regarding is I'm actually a daily commuter from out of town to this area and I'm actually always stuck in traffic and can take them to like 15 minutes. Taking that route daily kind of has reminded me that maybe a stoplight may not be the best option because a roundabout is able to calculate the traffic at all five intersections that have direct impact. And it's also able to mitigate pollution. I did read it up on the report earlier this week and I did see that the findings in the civil reports were that the roundabout does produce in fact less pollution encountered into a stoplight. And the roundabout also has a better option because the roundabout is able to provide pedestrian safety at all intersections regardless of whether traffic is continuing to flow at other intersections and others are able to stop for an intermittent time. So also that traffic area has gotten a lot more intense over the last few years as Madera has, population has grown and the infrastructure is starting to deteriorate. And it's not getting better for the next five years, six years. I don't see you with a stoplight if we stick with that. So I did want to mention that that is the reason why I did call. I reached spoke with some councilmember Rodriguez earlier this week and he informed me about this meeting, which was very helpful because I did not know this was an opportunity. So I appreciate that councilmember Rodriguez. Thank you again for that. And I wanted to just make a comment about my interaction that I have daily with that intersection and why it isn't important to me? Cause it's something that's impacted now during the pandemic, it was manageable as traffic wasn't as common on traffic during that area, but its traffic has rebounded and it's actually somehow stronger than before the pandemic. And so this is something that's super important to me because now we're at a point where the infrastructure is not working and unfortunately it's starting to affect citizens. Thank you for letting me speak this time.
Thank you. Are there any further comments, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We will close public comment and we'll bring her back to council for questions and our motion, councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ellen, you probably didn't think you're going to have a lot of questions today, right? You know, whenever you present visuals, they interact, they just stimulate questions. So I did have a question regarding the alleys. So I noticed that the alleys are very common in older neighborhoods. And the question I'm going to ask, you may not know the answer, but I, I can, I can see that with new development, I don't see alleys. So is there a building standard that says no more alleys? And why have we kind of faded away from those alleys? What was the purpose of them in the first place? Cause it seems like we have quite a few and they're constantly being paved. But what was the, what was the, at the time, what was that, that, that alleys were so important? That they're no longer being used?
I would be making a presumptive guess, but at the time when Madera was developed in a lot of other communities the same age, the way that the people conducted their daily business and, you know, the, the garbage out the back and it wasn't part of your front door. And even I know that, you know, the horse and buggy days drove a lot of the design of our current streets right away. So I think, you know, and I'm, there's a lot of other planners in the room that could certainly jump in, but I think it has a lot to do with just how we conduct our daily lives and what's important today versus when those communities and neighborhoods were built 100 years ago.
Thank you. But at this moment, we don't see alleys being, alleys being developed in our city. Am I right in saying that?
And I, I should probably defer to city engineer or the planner, but.
Will's waving his hand.
So are you going to?
Thank you, Will.
Mayor Garcia, councilmembers, there is no current prohibition in the city against creating new alleys. We do see some form of alleys in some of our planned developments where creative circulation and the use of land demands less dedication to perhaps street wits or accommodations for either emergency or service vehicles, but they're, they're not as common. Obviously it's a devotion of land and to additional pavement. Ellen's correct, much of what you saw in alley design in the past was a product of the overall form of development. You saw active spaces in the fronts of houses with porches. You saw detached garages with services and access from the back. So again, it's just not something that you see often designed within projects today, but you do see some components of that. You do see them in some instances and there is no prohibition against.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protemp.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. I think Chief Duran's feeling lonely out there, so I had a question for him. Thank you, Chief Duran. My question is on the CIP, we have money put aside for the RFP process for the upgrades improvements on station 56 and 57, and that was in 2324. And now we pushed it to 2425, have we not? And I know we've been busy and we've done a lot of things, inspections and everything else has been in place, but have we set forth on RFPs for those two stations yet?
First of all, let me just say good evening to the mayor of the council and thank you for your question. Yes, so we did complete an RFP, however, it kind of ties into this roundabout and stuff like that because of that structure that's on that northeast corner there. And depending on what happens with that, whether that is a historical house, whether that individual decides to sell and then the city purchases that land, that would affect the footprint of station 56. So we're kind of in limbo where the RFP has been done, but we can't get an accurate picture of what our footprint actually is going to be until some of these other variables are decided.
And tell me from my colleagues' knowledge that the RP was going to be for both stations and that's why you're holding out for 57s also?
Correct. It was a, it was a package deal because they're both of the same construction materials types and the exact same footprint. So essentially one would work for the other, but 56 being significantly older, that was the one we wanted to concentrate on because it is in a, a lower state.
Okay. So the question is, if council goes back and gets information on the roundabout, and this is another two years, three years down the road to get this all taken care of with Caltrans and get it in, in construction, is that mean that we're going to hold out on 57s upgrades and improvements?
That'll depend on the direction of council.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
So I'll see any further questions. Arnoldo, is there any way that we could advance 57 if we're going to be having to delay 56? Can we separate that and then move forward? And, and the chief just said it depends on the direction of council. So I would beg to, the question about we, if, if we put, bring that up, can we move forward?
At council's direction, we can definitely move 57 forward prior to 56. However, going back to something that Chief Duran said, 56 is in dire, and that's a strong word. It's in need of additional repair for, or simply fixing up in comparison to 57. We, we have a pot of funds that we've been saving up for a number of years. I'm going off the top of my head right now. I'm going to say we have approximately $7 million set aside for the rehab of those two fire stations. I think one of the challenges with 56 is while the two stations are identical, the needs are a little bit different. And the reason I say that is Lake Avenue or Lake Street carries a tremendous amount of traffic. One of the things that we're looking at is having a drive-through apparatus bay, whereas at 57, we could potentially continue to back onto it because the drive apron is much longer and the amount of volume of traffic is much lower on Schnorr Avenue. So while they're identical stations, in terms of the apparatus bay, they may be slightly designed different. The, the housing units that we're looking at potentially knocking down and rebuilding could be identical, but a lot of it's going to be determined by the APs. We have more space at 57 than we do at 56. As council's aware, we already bought the house next door at 56. We've demolished that house. We've had preliminary discussions with another neighboring property owner, which is not the potentially the historic house that was referenced earlier today, rather it's the house nearest to Swim and Pool Park. And we, we've had numerous discussions with that property owner about their. And we, we've had numerous discussions with that property owner about their potential willingness to sell. I think it would be inappropriate for me to comment on where those discussions stand here tonight. But with that being said, we are looking at some potential land assembly. And one of my concerns is if we move 57 in front of 56, which again, at council's direction, we can most definitely do. If that's the direction tonight, that's exactly what we'll do. With that being said, I just want to be sure we have enough funds to move 56 forward. Because 56, I believe, is the one that needs attention sooner rather than later. That's an older station. It's heavily used. It's our most active station. And, and I simply want to, want to come back to council at some point and say, council, we can't because we're out of money. So we're simply just trying to be very careful about the money we have and how we move those forward. With that being said, they're both in need of repair.
So thank you very much for that. Because when we're having the discussion regarding the roundabout and then possibly moving in that direction, one of the questions I would have is how is that impacting 56 and the improvement on station 56? Because it is the most used in our city. And Lake Street, when we're talking about those vehicles backing up, they impact our, our fire trucks being able to, to leave. And so if that's going to be a problem, then I would have to have more information about the impacts to station 56 if we're going to be looking at putting a roundabout as opposed to a, a signal line. But that would be another piece of information in order, in order for me personally to be able to make a decision.
Correct. And that's one of the reasons why we've been slow rolling the RFP for 56 is because we wanted to see how that signal light played out, knowing if we were going to require additional right of way or if we were going to be moving forward with the right of way that we currently have. And so there's a couple of variables that are unknown. With that being said, our goal is to move it forward sooner rather than later just because of its condition of 56. At some point, the city's going to have to move forward with the information we have at any given moment. If not, we may be waiting a long time because there are some variables that we may simply not know for a number of years. And they definitely don't want to hold progress up. That's not healthy either.
Thank you. Council member, one, two.
Yes, my question was the delay is through design or through completion? Right? So for, for, I understand what you're saying where depending on what's there, 56, it would change the design, right? So once we have the finite design, which we do have currently, right? With the signal light, so you're saying you're waiting for that signal light to be completed, installed, and then see what the impacts are so that we can move forward with the improvements there on the fire station on Lake Street?
No, I apologize if I wasn't very clear. So the goal is to have a better idea if the traffic signal is going to work. If we decide to move with the traffic signal, I would feel confident in moving forward with the 56 RFP with, with one condition, seeing if we can acquire a little bit more property in the area. We, we have not done that yet. We've acquired some, not all.
So, so us getting more information about the roundabout is really not going to impact anything? I mean, if we say, okay, well, we're going to do the roundabout and that delays a little bit of design. But it sounds like we would have, probably have to acquire that property anyway. So then that, that point is kind of moot because we would own pretty much everything in between, right?
Right. So we would acquire, there's two pieces of property there that the city does not own. I'll call it the, the corner house, the blue one, the Sabre House. That, that's the piece of property where the owner had identified back in 2020 that they would like to explore, placing that on the National Historic Places. With that being said, only because the house is old does not make it historic. And again, I'm not just sure what would make it historic, what would not make it historic. But typically historic, there is very stringent criteria when you add a house, especially on the national register. That's, that's typically when presidents stay at a house. So the biggest thing is the access to, 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 to that station and then potentially seeing if we can buy adjoining piece of property, which is the last remaining house on that street. If we buy that house, I think that would gave us, that would provide some clarity. But I, I think it would be prudent for us to have a little bit more clarity on the intersection because if there's anything placed in the middle of the road on Lake Street, then we would want to know that because if fire trucks can't make a left out, then we would want to know that before. And there's, there's different things you can do. You can add openings and breaks and things like that. But I think those are the things that we would simply want to know. So, so the holdup has been, do we acquire additional right of way or additional property? And are there any potential impacts? But the goal is to move it forward. It, it, it's, that's been kind of the slight holdup. And I wouldn't say it's been a major holdup. It's been a slight because we, I think we're pretty close on the RFP on issuing that. But we simply wanted to see if we can acquire additional property in the area. Yeah, because like I said, we currently have the community park and then we have the vacant parcel where we demolished the home already. Hopefully then answered your question. It was very long-winded.
Thank you.
Well, if there's nothing else, I'll make a move. I'll make a motion that we approve item D1 with the direction of council, asking that we look into the roundabout for the projected intersection on Central Fourth and Lake.
And I'll second that.
To approve item D1 amendments, are those in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Yes, have it, motion passes. We will now move on. Thank you very much for that. Very interesting, the lengthy report, but that's okay. We will now move on to item D2, the update on the 2024 emergency repair of Avenue 13's trunk line.
That is me again. Okay, here we are. So the, tonight's presentation update will be focused primarily on the activity that's occurred since the last meeting. And that has been in the area next to Nutrien Ag Solutions, very close to the collapse that we had back in January of 2023. This is, that collapse, it was actually the second of June's collapses. And so, but it is the very starting point of our CIPP lining project. So that's why we had to shift and focus this repair so that our CIPP lining contractor can get started. I don't know that this picture captured what I was thinking when I took it, but in reality out there, it, it's been somewhat like a three wing circus. Controlled chaos, but we have numerous contractors out there repairing and building different components of either the bypass system or trying to install 42 inch pipeline 20 feet in the ground. At the same time, we've got Georgia Pacific and their facilities trying to get their trucks in and out. The winery fortunately has an alternate access. They haven't been in our way. Nutrien, this is their only way in and out. And so, and it's one lane traffic control. It's a little bit like Disneyland out there. So, but it's working and we appreciate everybody's patience and cooperativeness through this. So we have finished, Floyd Johnson has finished installing the 42 inch pipeline there next to the nutrient collapse. It was finished, I think, Monday. And Rain for Rent has continued to bypass the sewer down at the first collapse by Mission, Mission Bell. And so they've continued with their operations. Our contract liner, SAC, has, and their subcontractor, which is MPS, they built the first piece of the long-term bypass up there on Granada with all the pumps by the railroad tracks, but they continued building. So they, they fused their pipe together and it's just one long pipe from all those pumps until they're going to get past this first phase of the project. So they've continued to build their system even while we're in the middle of replacing the failed pipe. So, and as of today, in that area, just west of Granada, Floyd Johnston, they, you know, they've installed the pipe. We've tested it. It's beautiful, backfilled. And all of the base rock for a brand new road section was placed today. There's some fine grading that needs to happen, but they're going to move off and let our CIPP contractor move into the site so they can start their work. So I wanted to show, this is what was used to build, to excavate and install the pipe. It's called a slide rail system. It's a little slower, but what it does is it protects the road. So it, not as much of an excavation opens up because we needed to protect the water line and the gas main that was there. And we're, at first, we were going to do a traditional method down by Mission Bell. But because of all of the trades and the customers out there, we need to maintain that one, at least one road or one lane. So we're moving this operation down to Mission Bell, starting next week. This is, it shows, so instead of it being 24 feet wide, we're able to keep it within the confines of this shoring setup here. So this is an example. Here's a pipe, the new pipe that's going in. It's our neighbor's ADS triple wall sewer pipe. It gets placed in a fabric, a black fabric, and then it gets covered with crushed rock. And then it gets wrapped up like a burrito and that protects it from backfill activity and, and any traffic loading on top of it. So on Saturday, they reached the piece that Floyd Johnston had actually repaired last January. They did such a good job that it took them a whole day to jackhammer out the concrete around that piece that they had put in with the old pipe. So we lost a day there, but just attest to their workmanship that it, it would have held, what probably would have held up the trunker, the tanker that was out there. So, but they did get through it. And this slide, it represents that last piece of pipe that went in. This little piece here was filled, filled the gap. And there was a coupler installed with those metal bands. And then they were able to button it up and backfill it. So this was the road base going in on Monday. So at the same time, our contractor has been building the long-term bypass. This is the machine that actually fuses the pipe. That piece spins and it melts the two pieces together. And they, they've just got hundreds and hundreds of feet on this. I, I circled this because I wanted to note the time, 2:54 AM. So that's low traffic. They had to put these pipes into a trench that they'd built. Our team, our inspectors have been out there watching, taking notes of who's in place, watching for safety. Every time there's contractors out there, our, our team has been out there. So they've been wonderful through all of this. This is that same piece the next day after that pipe had gone in. So this is what you'll see all along Avenue 13. We will be moving forward now to the original, or the first collapse of June over by Mission Bell. They'll be starting, they're, they're mobilizing some of their equipment on Monday. When MPS takes over, then Rain for Rent can demobilize out of the area and then Floyd Johnston Construction will, will hit it. They're going to use that Mission Bell parking area or the entrance to Mission Bell there to store all their equipment and staging. So this is that original location that they will be replacing that pipe that was there. So as far as the estimated costs, to date, really, the only increase I've seen has been in the bypass pumping because it's gone on longer than we originally thought. So though I haven't seen invoices, I did bump it up almost another 80,000 just because that's what I expect to see. I haven't had evidence that the construction repairs are going to go higher. But again, if we do it, the next update, we would report that. As far as our long-term repair, the CIPP project, the full bypass for the entire phase will be in place by Monday. Rain for Rent will move off of the emergency repair. They will, their first order of work is to clean and camera or CCTV. The first shot is what, I'll, I'll define a shot of cured and placed pipeline. And a shot is how much they line at one time. They have a limited distance they can go and so they call those shots. And that, the cleaning and the camera work will take approximately two days because it's a very slow process. And then they will be lining, hopefully on Wednesday of next week, they'll start installing the liner. And then the cure process takes another day and a half or so. And then they, once that is in place, then they're going to continue moving westward with the cleaning and the camera work. So this picture depicts what they call the shots. So on the right side is Granada Drive. The, the orange triangle is the piece that Floyd Johnston just replaced. And then each of these blue triangles are the shots. So they're going to do shot one, which will encompass two manhole links next week. And then in probably another two weeks, they'll be back to finish the second shot because Floyd Johnston, this pink here is where Floyd Johnston is preparing, is repairing the second collapse or, sorry, the first collapse. Once that's clear, then they'll finish shot two and then shot three, which will take it up to Road 24. And the goal is to have that finished so the road can be opened for the winery season for Mission Bell because that's the access to their scale. So this is your regular update and we do ask that you adopt a resolution. There are no noted corrections. Apologies. That was a carryover from the last one. Continuing a finding of emergency relating to the emergency response and repairs to the sewer main pursuant to Public Contract Code Section 2250.
Thank you, Ellen. We will now open public comment. Or is there anyone in the public wishing to ask questions regarding our emergency repair on Avenue 13? Are there any members of the public on Zoom or in written form, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will close public comment and bring it back to council for questions. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. First of all, Ellen, thank you for the presentation. I just hope no one gets drunk with all those shots. Pun intended, but you are next to Constellation Wines. Now, looking at the pictures that you showed with the exposure of the rebar, that scares me. I know you said that cameras will be going through two days. Is that something that they, they can uncover throughout that whole trunk line?
Yes, they're, they're aware of the condition. And so they will specifically be looking for those types of, they call them voids. So where the pipe has disintegrated and, and the surrounding soil starts to come in. They can line through some of those depending upon how extensive it is. The process, because I, I, believe me, I've asked them the same question. The process is such that once the liner is inserted, it's pressurized at the same time. So you're not going to get that surge of pressure and then the relief. That's what causes the collapses. It's going to be a one-time surge to pressurize that liner and then it's going to cure hard. So that's how they're able to go ahead and line past some of the smaller voids. Now, a, a complete pipe like that, well, if the rebar is intact and if they think it would withstand that initial pressure, they'll probably line through it and then it's brand new pipe.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I only ask because that, that seems pretty vulnerable to, I mean, I know the pressures of having all that land kind of put, you know, just puts a lot of pressure. Again, I'm not the engineer. I'm just looking at the pictures and, and that seemed like the integrity of that. I don't know if it would stand the lining.
So one thing to note is that the construction and the excavation process did knock a lot of it out. As long as there is a channel in place that can hold that liner, that's the process. That's why this process works well here.
And just trying to get my head wrapped around this, but a lot of the stuff caved in. A lot of it was not only the cement from the trunk line. How is that debris removed so that it doesn't affect the liner?
That's part of the cleaning process. So they've got the vacuum trucks that are at each manhole and they're slowly either pushing or pulling depending upon where they are in the pipe, the debris back to the manhole and then they will suck it out. And then it goes, it'll actually go out to our wastewater treatment plant because it's contaminated debris. But it will be, they can't line it until that debris is removed.
Okay. Thank you, Ellen.
Did we, Ellen, did we actually have a video regarding the lining process?
The video is from their website that, that we had initially shown a link to it. So if I'm able to pull up that website here. You want to go or I can just go to there?
Yeah, just go to the website, SAC.co.
This will actually show a visual of the lining process.
I'm going to have to reshare it because it's online, can't see it.
Here it is. So how do I get this so they can see it?
Come on, try it.
SAC.
Let me pause that.
K's No Dig, cured-in-place pipe technology is a quick and cost-effective approach to rehabilitating sewer and water pipes. Aging underground piping systems typically look like this and can be filled with roots, broken pipe, and other debris that impede flow. We use a high-pressure water jetter to clean the pipe in order to first evaluate, then line the pipe. After the host pipe has been cleaned, we run a specialized closed-circuit camera through the line, looking for anything that could impede the installation of the CIPP liner. We will also identify all live service connections. In preparation for the CIPP liner installation, we will vacuum impregnate the liner with our thermal setting resin at our wet-out facility. This is the component that will later make the liner rigid, like a typical PVC pipe. Our CIPP liner cures under heat, so our freshly-prepared liner tube is transported to the job site via refrigerated truck to ensure it's kept malleable prior to its installation. At the job site, the host pipe is first bypassed, so there are no service interruptions. Then our installation equipment is set up, and the CIPP liner is installed using air, as shown here, or water pressure to conform to the inside of the host pipe. This process is much like turning a sock inside out. Once the CIPP liner is completely inverted into the host pipe, hot water or steam is cycled through it, which causes the thermal setting resin to cure into a rigid state. Once the CIPP liner has fully cured, water or steam are continuously cycled through for a specified period of time, and then allowed to gradually cool down to achieve an optimal finished product. After the specified cooldown period, the pressure is released, and the ends of the liner are cut inside the manholes. After the line has been opened at both ends, a robotic cutter is deployed to open all the service connections from inside the pipe. This alleviates the need to dig to restore service. The newly-lined section is re-inspected by a specialized closed-circuit camera across its entire length. Our experienced crews perform this final inspection to ensure proper installation and to verify that the lateral connections have been properly restored. After the pipe is newly lined by SAC, problems associated with infiltration, leakage, and deteriorating infrastructure are solved for years to come. CIPP is a proven solution for pipeline rehabilitation that is typically less disruptive and more cost-effective than traditional dig-and-replace methods. SAC is one of the most experienced worldwide providers of CIPP technology. Contact SAC today about our CIPP and other pipeline rehabilitation solutions.
I found that, that video, the first time Arnold showed that to me, to be fascinating.
SAC's No Dig, cured-in-place pipe technology is a quick and cost-effective approach to rehabilitating sewer and water pipes.
I'm afraid I'm.
Are we good? So as you mentioned there at the end, traditionally, to repair something of this massive size, we'd have to trench it, remove pipe, put brand-new pipe. But this way, we can salvage the pipe that has not been deteriorated and use that and put a liner in it, which is as strong as the original. And it's much more cost-effective and cheaper, basically.
Yeah, what we're saving is the cost of essentially rebuilding Avenue 13 because it's so deep, and we're finding that the original trench that was put in might have had different compaction standards than today. That's why so much of the sides slough away is because it's not as well-compacted, and it's sandy soil, and we're dealing with that, too.
Thank you. That was, that was great. So, seeing no further questions, I'll entertain a motion. So I move to approve item D2.
Second.
Motion to approve the emergency repair and emergency response repairs to Avenue 13 trunk line, item D2 by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilmember Viejas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The ayes have it.
And through the mayor, just to confirm, that was a unanimous vote. In other words, there were five, at least five affirmative votes?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. We will now move on to administrative reports under item E. Item E1 is an informational report on the Madera Metro Transit System.
Let's see if I can pull this off.
Just don't bring that.
No one trusts me. Yeah, they're already coming.
I've seen enough of sewers tonight.
Oh, let's see. Yeah? No? Ah, there it is. Yeah. Yeah, this guy. There we go. Good evening, council. Mayor Mike Lima, Director of Financial Services. I, I realize that I'm one of the few things standing between you and a Fourth of July celebration, and so I'm going to be as quick as possible tonight. Tonight, we have a presentation for informational purposes on the Madera Metro and our transit system in general. Do that. There we go. Just a quick overview, the city operates a fixed route system. We have four routes within the system, the purple, orange, green, and blue lines. There are 12 buses assigned to our fixed route system. This is the system, and there's a map of it right here, shows the various areas that it goes to. From north to south, the system, or south to north, I should say, line, the system terminates at Madera Community College and currently terminates at Matilda Torres to the north. Eventually, it will go all the way to the Amtrak station once the roadwork on Road 26 is completed. We also have a dial-a-ride service. Dial-a-ride is a door-to-door service. A reservation is required. We have six buses assigned to dial-a-ride, and two vans are designated for ADA or paratransit customers. This, this table gives you an idea of the ridership over the last five years. You can see quite a big drop in ridership during the pandemic, went from, on the fixed route, from 66,000 passengers to 48,000. Dial-a-ride dropped about 500 at that time, but we've had a pretty significant recovery since then. The most recently finished fiscal year, we finished with 74,000, roughly 74,500 riding our fixed route, 17,400 riding dial-a-ride. So we are back above pre-pandemic levels on the fixed route and also on dial-a-ride in general, sorry, as in addition. Dial-a-ride is mainly due to Madera Community College students. They have free access to those rides, and they are utilizing them quite heavily. Finally, ADA and paratransit services began in March of 2024. I'm going to come back to this slide in a little bit, so just keep it in mind. If you miss it, you'll see it again. This is our fair structure for the Madera Metro, and the short version, the short summary of this, is that the system is free except for members of the general public using dial-a-ride who are between the ages of 18 and 59 and not a college student, and also a companion of an ADA or paratransit passenger. Those are the only two groups that pay. Everyone else gets to ride the system for free. So the system is continuously evolving to meet the ongoing community needs, and the following are a few key projects. So we're going to touch on implementation of the Madera Transit Plan, renovation of the Intermodal Transit Facility, and the micro-transit feasibility study. So the Madera Transit Plan, the kickoff for that really began April 21, 2021. Council approved an agreement to develop the transit plan with a consultant. In September 21, or September 22, the transit plan was completed. Council adopted that plan as well as service design guidelines. And in April of 2023, council also approved revisions to the fixed route system. On January 6 of 2024, the new system became operational. Forty-two stops were removed from the system, but we added 65. So there's additional stops in general that have been added to the system. We also added the Blue Route, as I mentioned, I mentioned the Blue Route previously, that was added, and that is the new, now the new Route 4, which, as I said, that route goes from Cleveland Avenue all the way to Matilda Torres, eventually will go to the Amtrak In January of 2023, council also approved an emergency plan to utilize some funding that was available and dedicated toward the fixed route system. That funding was used to spend, primarily was used to spend on amenities for the system. These are a couple of them. The first one, at several of the stops, we have these what are called semi-seats. There are two seats under the bus stop sign. They cost $695 apiece. We spent $20,850 in total on those. And then we have several shelters, about five shelters throughout, throughout the town. Picture of those shelters is here as well. Those cost $23,744 apiece for a grand total of $118,720. So we are, so the plan's been operational for about six months. We do believe that that explains some of the increase in traffic that we've seen on the fixed route system. Having that fourth route has increased traffic. We still have some, I guess you would say punch list items that we are working on at the moment. We are removing some old bus stop poles. We're relocating bus stop shelters. We're installing new bus stop signage and schedule holders. We also have some informational kiosks that we have purchased. We'll be putting those in at the Intermodal Facility, the Walgreens on Cleveland Avenue, the Madera County Complex, Madera Community Hospital, and Rancho San Miguel. And then finalizing, once we get all that put in, we'll finalize the bus schedules and brochures that go along with it. Moving on to the renovation of the Intermodal Facility, on May 17, 2023, council approved an agreement with RRM Design to renovate the Intermodal Building. The renovation will convert the former Greyhound Station into city offices for Grand Division, while also establishing a transfer point for passengers. Council received an update on this project from a representative of the RRM Design Group on March 6, 2024. I believe you probably remember that, gave an idea of what the plans are looking like and what the design will eventually manifest itself to be. As of today, project is near completion on that design phase. We anticipate that we'll be out to bid for construction sometime in the fall. The total compensation for the contract is $285,961, funded with affordable housing and sustainable communities monies, as well as Public Transportation Modernization Improvement and Service Enhancement Account grants. We anticipate the whole project will be done sometime in the spring of 2025. Microtransit. Yeah, this is probably the one that gets the most interest, I will say. So let me go back. I think I can do it. Yes, I can. Let me go back to this slide. Why are we thinking about microtransit? Well, as I mentioned, there's been significant growth in our passengers. If you look at it, if you go from the pandemic year to today, we have, in fixed route, we've gone up a little over 70%, if I remember right, if my number, oh, sorry, 54% is what we've increased in basically four years. But even when you take a look at that and you add up and go across and you add up all the people that have ridden the bus system in this past year, which, as I mentioned, was a record over the, if you look at the last five years, you put that in the context of the population of Madera. There are 66,000 people. When you add all those numbers, if it comes up to 92,000. So what that tells you is, right, last year, every person in Madera rode the bus once, and about half of them rode it a second time. And that was our utilization. And we're thinking, maybe that isn't enough utilization of our system. That might not be enough. And so where is the growth really happening? Well, as I said, fixed route is up 54% since the pandemic era. But take a look at dial-a-ride. Dial-a-ride's up 203% in that same time period. We believe our customers are telling us, we want door-to-door service. We want some sort of service that will provide us with, we can pick it up, we can call, and we get picked up, and we go where we want to, not on a route. Although there is a constituency for route service, it seems like the folks here in town are wanting some sort of door-to-door service, and that's why we're looking at a microtransit system. So I'll go back. What we need to do is, first, we need to kind of formalize this with a feasibility study. And so the purpose of the feasibility study is to develop a framework and path toward a modern transit service system. The deliverables are recommended implementation plan, as well as public outreach of the implementation plan, soliciting community feedback on what exactly they want. The feasibility study will be released this month, and we're hoping to get, hoping to be back at council sometime in September to award a contract for it. So we kind of touched on this, and I'm just going to say that, you know, internally, as we kind of bandied this around, it's just been kind of interesting to see where the ideas go when you start talking about this. We held a workshop on January 17. We talked about a microtransit system, and one of the things we brought up was maybe having an impact on school truancy. And you're probably sitting there going, well, how would this work with school truancy? So as I understand it, there is a truancy issue here in Madera, or there has been historically. It stems from a couple of different areas. First off, folks who have only one-car families, unable to juggle taking the kids to school as well as going to work. That's one area. Another area is the, another area is the, just kind of the, what was the second one? Now I lost my train of thought. That's it. Thank you, sir. The buses, they don't, they don't go, thank you. He saw the presentation beforehand. The buses, they have a limited route. They don't pick up folks. They don't pick up kids that are outside of a certain radius. If you're between kindergarten and sixth, you get picked up if you're outside of one mile from the school. You're at a high school, it's two miles. So that forces people to walk if you're within that circle and you have those conditions. And when you're walking, sometimes you have to cross the train tracks. If there's a train, you get delayed. That all leads to truancy issues. What if we had a microtransit system and we worked with Madera Unified and said, hey, we will, we will pick up your child and take him to school if you're within that radius? Would that help solve truancy? We don't know. But it's an interesting idea, and it's interesting that when you start looking at this and start kind of playing with the possibilities, different ideas start popping up. Now, I don't want to mischaracterize this and say, microtransit is going to solve all Madera's problems, even the ones you haven't thought of. It's not going to do that. But what I will say is, it's just interesting to see the possibilities. Once you get past, public transit is always a bus. Public transit is always a bus, or it's always a subway. Once you get past that, other opportunities start arising, and that's what I think has got us excited as we're looking at this. So we're very, we're very enthused about the possibilities that could exist with this, and we look forward to seeing how it plays out. Well, that is my presentation for tonight, and again, this is informational only, but I, I am here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. We will open public comment under item E1. It is an informational report on the Madera Metro Transit System, but there's anyone wishing to comment on our metro system, please say so now. Are there any written or Zoom questions regarding the transit?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you much. We will close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for comments. Mayor Protemp.
Thank you, Director Lima. I just had a question really fast. So I know we're all excited about not doing buses versus other vehicles like vans. So are, have we looked to purchase more vans than we already have to kind of put this into place? We're looking for grants for more vans?
Right now, no. If you're referring to like a microtransit, the microtransit side, it could be Madera Uber, where you're driving automobiles, where you have a fleet of perhaps electric vehicles that are riding around. It could be vans. It could be, there's a lot of possibilities. That's what the feasibility study is really going to analyze and see what fits best for this community. It could be a vans, like I said, a van system, but we could have a Madera Uber as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lima. I appreciate your enthusiasm when it comes to microtransit systems. Actually, that's exactly what I look forward to. So when you talk about Madera Uber, just kind of, I, I want to visualize, is that a system in where employees from a contracted service or possible people that are part of Uber can take on that as well to help, you know, utilize, the way I see it is maybe less emissions by using, you know, cars to pull people around. So just kind of want to get an idea of, of what this, this Madera Uber would look like.
Well, I mean,
I, I know it's far out there.
Yeah.
Something we can do, but it's very practical now.
Yeah, it is. I mean, you know, I, again, I'm going to rely on the feasibility study that will probably define what exactly fits best for our community. But I do know other communities have an app on their phone where you literally just log in and order a ride and that ride shows up. It's usually a company that provides that kind of service. And they will come in and they will be monitoring those, that app for reservations and then dispatching drivers out to fulfill those rides. So it would operate just like Uber. Now, will it use existing Uber staff or people that work with Uber? Don't know. I honestly don't know that. But I will say, they will, the company that sets it up usually has its own drivers and usually hires that and would basically operate a, a parallel system, but not necessarily use that. But it's possible. It is possible.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your motivation. It certainly inspires not only me, but I'm sure the youth that utilize a lot of these transit systems, not only to make it to school, but like Dial-A-Ride, to make it to certain locations on demand. And I, that is something that I think that we're seeing that's evolving in the transportation world. So appreciate your, your presentation and more importantly, appreciate the spirit on the microtransit systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report, Michael. I, I have a hard time reaching the Madera Metro website. Do you know when that will be working?
I know that we're, I know we're constantly working on it. I do know that the, I believe the, the website, I was looking at it earlier today. I think it's operational. If you're referring to like the call centers and, and calling in, I know that MV has had some staffing issues and they are resolving those as well. So I believe call times for like Dial-A-Ride have decreased, but I think you can get on the, the website and actually use it right now. We might be talking two different websites. I'm not sure, but I do believe that the website is active, at least the one I've seen.
Okay, the one, so I'm talking about the one that's posted on the bus stops, maderametro.gov. And I've circulated it, asked other people, and they also have a hard time.
Okay. Yeah, I will look into that and, and ensure that that's working.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further questions, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
We will now move on to, yeah, we're ready, to item E two, a smoke-free community. This is a presentation, Madera County Department of Public Health. This presentation is also informational.
Good evening, City Council members. I'm Mary Garcia. I'm Raslene Boparay, Health Education Coordinator at the Madera County Department of Public Health. And today we have an educational sec, um, smoke-free multi-unit housing presentation presented by our youth coalition, and I'll go ahead and let them take the ring.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members and members of the public. My name is Nelly Guzman Dominguez. I am from District Six. I am an upcoming freshman in Fresno City. And the organization I'm coming with is SWAT. SWAT stands for Students Working Against Tobacco.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I am, my name is Rosa Masiel. I am from District Six. I am an upcoming freshman to Fresno State, and I am from the organization of SWAT.
Hello, everyone. My name is Melina Santos. I'm from District Four. I attend Torres High School, and I'm a part of the SWAT Coalition.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janine Arenas. I'm from District Six, and I'm an upcoming freshman at Madera Community College. I'm part of the organization SWAT.
Today, we are going to present to you about the Madera Smoke-Free Community, Strengthening Our Community and Providing Equitable Smoke-Free Protection for All. In today's presentation, we're going to talk about secondhand smoke, in which we are talking about the side stream smoke, the smoke released from the burning end of a cigarette, aerosol from electronic cigarettes, and the smoke from marijuana, an exhaled mainstream smoke, the smoke exhaled by the smoker. Did you know that secondhand smoke contains over seven thousand chemicals found in tobacco smoke, of which two hundred and fifty are toxic, in which seventy of those cause cancer, containing lead, lighter fluid, and much more. There's no safe level for secondhand smoke, and home is the main place where children are exposed the most. Secondhand smoke not only affects children, but adults and pets as well.
In the fall of two thousand twenty-two, the Madera County Tobacco Control, Control Program, MCTCP, American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, Voices Inspiring Valley Action, ACS Cambiva, and community volunteers such as Youth Leadership Institute, YOLI Youth, and Students Working Against Tobacco, SWAT Youth, conducted two hundred and ninety-seven surveys in the city of Madera on tobacco-related issues. Nine out of ten residents surveyed said they prefer to live in a, in a smoke-free home. Eight out of ten residents said yes when asked if secondhand smoke is a problem in their community. And eighty-four percent supported policy to protect non-smokers from secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing. According to recent, recent housing estimates, fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight residents of Madera residents live in multi-unit housing. This is approximately twenty percent of the population, one out of five residents.
Well, work has been done to educate our community in the city of Madera regarding secondhand smoke and multi-unit housing. Well, we collaboratively have held two community forums that were held in the summer of two thousand twenty-three at two separate affordable housing apartment complexes to educate and inform the community, community about tobacco-related issues and the importance of smoke-free housing in multi-unit housing settings. We have collected a combination of one hundred and forty-one petitions, and we have also conducted a public opinion poll on tobacco-related issues. As previously mentioned, two hundred and ninety-seven surveys were conducted in the fall of two thousand twenty-two at community events, apartment complex, and COVID- nineteen vaccine events, showing overall support for smoke-free multi-unit housing. We have held community organization presentations and overall participates express support for policy to protect multi-unit housing residents and from the harm of secondhand tobacco smoke. We have had multi-unit housing property owners and managers conversations. We are connected with seven apartment complexes, and overall, they were supportive of smoke-free multi-unit, multi-unit housing.
The committee has already adopted a smoke-free policy that protects the community from secondhand smoke exposure in parks and other areas, and that is good. But as a community, we could improve on that and expand the protections to more people. A comprehensive smoke-free policy would include multi-unit housing such as apartment units of two or more units and condos, as well as sidewalks, streets, doorways, entryways, public events, service areas such as bus and train stops, and even updating our current local law to align with the state law to include a smoke-free rooms in hotels and motels. As mentioned, we are concerned for our neighbors, friends, family, and community overall, that is exposed to secondhand smoke in their home. Specifically, those that live in multi-unit housing because they are involved are exposed to secondhand smoke. In order to provide the most protection to these vulnerable communities, individual units, patios, balconies, and indoor and outdoor common areas should be smoke-free. This will protect residents from smoke drifting into their homes. We urge, we urge council to take this into consideration. This is a public health issue that is affecting our community. We would like to come back and present more information. We are available to meet with any city coun, any council members involved, and, sorry, individually to answer any questions. Can we count on your support? What are the next steps we can do?
Here is our contact information, and this concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any, are we going to open a public comment? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Giselle Garcia, and I'm a SWAT member from District Six. And I'm an upcoming senior at Madera South High School, and I'm a resident of yours, and I represent my community. I'm here to talk to you about, about smoke-free housing in Madera. This is an important issue that is affecting me and my family and many others from the community from enduring unwanted smoke. I live two blocks away from an apartment complex, and my family and I have been enduring the strong smell of smoking. Up to sixty-five percent of the air in a, in an apartment can come from other units in the building. This demonstrates how a large amount of smoke can be consumed quickly. This can lead to severe health consequences, consequences, and ultimately death. This, it is important to protect all residents living in apartments and, and especially, especially childrens as they are developing. As of now, the home is the main place where children are exposed to secondhand smoking. Everyone should be given the opportunity, opportunity to feel safe and live in a smoke-free environment. We thank you for your time, and we ask the city council to put this item as an, as an agenda item for future hearing.
Um, my name is Abigail. I'm a SWAT volunteer from District Three. I'm a resident of yours, and I represent my community. I'm here to talk to you about smoke-free multi-unit housing in Madera. I care about this issue because I have a friend whose parents smoke. Their parents smoking influenced them, so they started smoking. All secondhand smoke is harmful to your health, even a brief exposure due to the toxic chemicals that can cause cancer and other diseases. We ask city council to put this item as an agenda item for future hearing. Uh, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emily Ramos, and I'm a SWAT member from the community of Madera. I'm a resident of yours, and I represent my community. I'm here to talk to you about smoke-free housing in Madera. I'd like to share my personal experience about this topic. I live in an apartment complex with my family. My older sister has asthma, and I have a chronic illness. About a year ago, my neighbor would smoke. The smoke would come from the AC unit. Because of this, my sister and I started having more respiratory problems. We had trouble sleeping at night and concentrating at school, which started to affect our physical and mental health. To this day, my family and I are still recovering from the effects that secondhand smoking has had on us. All secondhand smoking is harmful to your health, even a brief exposure due to toxic chemicals that cause cancer and other diseases. We ask the city council to put this item as an agenda item for a future hearing. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and everyone else. Hello, my name is Lucero Garcia, and I'm a SWAT member from District Six. I am also an upcoming sophomore in Madera South High School. I'm a resident of yours, and I represent my community. I am here to talk to you about smoke-free housing in Madera. I care deeply about this issue because I have a friend who lives in a multi-unit housing. She lives there with her mother and a younger brother. It is unfair for them to have to inhale the smoke left by others from vent to vent or pipe to pipe. And due to the air they are exposed to, it is unhealthy. Home should be a safe place, not another space where they don't feel safe due to tobacco. It may possibly cause more concerning issues for her younger brother, considering he has asthma, which can lead to higher health risks. Many people have been disclosed to secondhand smoking due to residential groupings or neighboring units. We thank you for your time, and we ask city council to put this item as an agenda item for future hearing. Thank you.
Are there any further public comments? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosa Masiel, and I am from District Six. I am a resident of yours, and I represent my community. I'm here to talk to you about smoke-free housing in Madera. According to a health equity and smoke multi-unit housing statistics, it's believed that secondhand smoke exposures among babies and children can lead to negative health effects, such as lung problems, ear infections, and asthma attacks. I believe this is a topic that should be taken into consideration, especially because its, its health effects are shown in the most vulnerable, our youth. My purpose is to bring in a healthier environment to our youth. We thank you for your time, and we ask city council to put this item as an agenda item for your future hearing. Thank you.
Hello, ma'am. Janine Arenas, and I'm from District Six. I'm a resident of yours, and I represent my community. I'm here to talk to you about the smoke-free housing in Madera. Although I don't live in an apartment complex, I would still like to address this issue because of the dangerous effects secondhand smoke and smoke in general can do to the body. It can especially affect our, the younger generation, children, who are still developing and with coming in contact with the smoke, it can be judgmental. This would also go for older generations, whose health would also be jeopardized. Did you know that the home is the main place where children are exposed to secondhand smoke? With these tobacco, with this, the tobacco industry, heavily marketing cigarettes, and smokeless tobacco in rural communities, this makes it more likely that people will be exposed to secondhand smoke in rural homes. Not just that, but forty-one thousand non-smokers die from secondhand smoke each year in the United States. As an older sibling, I fear for these children. For as innocent as they are, they are aware of the dangers they are in. I wouldn't want my younger siblings to have to live in a place where they would be exposed to smoke. We ask city council to put this item as an agenda item for a future hearing. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Melina Santos. I'm a SWAT volunteer from District Four, and I'm a constituent of yours, and I represent my community. I'm here to talk to you about smoke-free housing in Madera. The home is an important environment for children where they should feel safe and comfortable within their home walls. But what you might not know is that the home is the main place where children are exposed to secondhand smoke. Due to sixty-five percent of air in an apartment can come from other units in the building. So without realizing, neighbors who do participate in using tobacco products have caused harm to children's life. I myself have younger siblings and cousins who understand the consequences and stray away from participating in using these tobacco products. So to think that they or other children who are innocent aren't even allowed to be safe in their own homes is heartbreaking. Children shouldn't be, shouldn't be afraid of their health being affected by factors that they do not engage with. Children should have to not carry the consequences or have their lives at risk because of someone else's doing. We ask city council to put this item as an agenda item for future hearing. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and members of the public. My name is Nelly Guzman Dominguez. I am a SWAT volunteer. I live in District Six. I am a resident of yours, and I represent my community. I'm here to talk to you about smoke-free housing in Madera. As mentioned in our presentation and by my peers, a recent survey found seven out of ten Madera residents are concerned about secondhand smoking, especially where children and people with asthma are exposed. The home is the main place where children are exposed to secondhand smoking. Children are vulnerable to developing health effects from secondhand smoking. Secondhand smoking exposure among babies and children can cause lung problems, ear infection, asthma attacks. That is why we ask city council to put this item as agenda and item for a future hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, and well done. Are there any further public comments regarding this item? Lisa, do we have any comments on Zoom or in?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will close public comment. Colleagues, do we, anyone have, wish to ask a student's questions or anything? Mayor Pro Temp.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. First off, I'd like to thank you ladies for speaking on behalf of your community. I know it's not easy getting up here to speak to strangers or your council members that you don't know quite intimately and have not met us. It's not easy. Your leaders coming today and sitting through a couple of hours of our, our city council meeting, so we appreciate that. My first question would be that your My first question would be that you're coming with Madera County Department of Public Health. So my question is, have you presented to the Board of Supervisors?
No, we have not. I apologize. I'm Raisleen Buparay. I'm Health Education Coordinator at the Department of Public Health. We have not presented to the Board of Supervisors yet.
So my question is, I don't know if you're aware of that, that the city is in the county. So any city resident is a, is a county resident with the Madera County Health Department. So with the Board of Supervisors putting this on their agenda, that does also cover our city residents. I want you to know that I am an educator, schoolteacher of thirty-three years, and constantly teach my students about smoking and secondhand smoke. I also am, am an opponent about thirdhand smoke. I don't, sure if you're aware of that, but that's very dangerous. Especially to me, I'm asthmatic. I have a nebulator. I have kids who come with debris of smoke from their parents and they put me into an asthma attack and here I go running home to get on my machine. So I'm an advocate about smoking, secondhand smoking, thirdhand smoking. It's, it's very devastating to us that have a hard time breathing. We all breathe today and don't even think about it until you become asthmatic and don't realize every breath is very difficult to take. So I'm in your court for that. I think you have a lot of leadership skills here with the great mentors that you have, that you should rally these apartment complexes. And there are number, there's power with numbers and get them to change their views and their rules in their apartment complexes or condos. It's really not government to tell entities what to do with their buildings and their residents. So for me, I have a hard time putting it as an agenda item when I don't think that's our place as a council member to put that on the agenda. I do support you and be there with you if you are going to advocate at these apartments. We do also sit as a housing authority and that would be something that we can look into, but I'm pretty sure if I'm not mistaken, all our housing units are smoke-free, that they're not allowed. This council also put in place smoke, smoke-free parks. You're not allowed to smoke in our parks. So I can say that my colleagues have been in your court and we are supportive in things that you do. I would suggest highly, in my opinion, and my colleagues make speak for themselves, is to go to the Board of Supervisors and do this presentation and encourage them. Because if they put this in place, then the city, they can, it's part of the city because we are county residents. They are the ultimate of us. So that would be my suggestions and those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Montes.
Yeah, so I want to echo some of the comments that, that Councilmember or Mayor Protem Gallegos made. A lot of courage, oh, sorry. I was chewing earlier, so I don't want you guys to hear. But I do want to echo some of the comments that Councilmember or Mayor Protem Gallegos made. A lot of courage coming up and speaking and it's something that you guys are obviously passionate about. I will agree with her on the question of taking this to the county, right? Especially being a department of the county. I think that it'd be fair to take it to them and we would be covered in the, under the umbrella of any ordinance that they would pass, right? While I disagree with Mayor Protem Gallegos, the city can tell people what to do, even in their own homes, but it's, it's definitely a balance of should we, right? Because this is, this is something a little bit different. There's a privacy of their own home. It's going to impact some of these residents a little bit more negatively. I think any cost borne by the owner is going to be passed on to the residents, right? And they might not be in the best socioeconomic status to begin with. One of the things that I know I've met with while I was before is think about incentive programs, right? Like what Mayor Protem Gallegos was saying. Figure out a way to incentivize some of these operators, right? Some of these facilities to make it a proactive choice on their part to become a smoke-free facility. Not that I'm, again, opposed to the concept I did after the City of Madera's proactive rental inspection program, where we addressed, or were trying to address, issues of health and safety for rentals, right? I will say that we have had, we have brought that item up before because it's not working the way that it was intended, right? So there's some tweaking that we need to do on that. But it is, it does come at a cost to the city and to the operators. So that would be my ask, right? Is there, are there, besides being punitive, aside saying, hey, you have to do this, is there any way that we can incentivize people to do it voluntarily? So those are, those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garcia. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for having the courage to come out here and, and presenting your smoke-free presentation. I do agree with Councilmember Montes in that this body did take action in rental housing ordinances, right? We tried to pass an ordinance for rental inspections so that, you know, we, we made sure that there was no subpar living conditions. So that created health and safety. Smoking is no different. I don't know what the legal ramifications for this body would be. I know during public settings, public parks, this body took an initiative unanimously to put the smoke-free signs. And again, there may be a violation if you smoke within the parks. I know signage plays a big part. I don't know that the city can force multi-unit owners to, to put that signage, but I certainly would like to explore that and see if that is something that we can do and work with some of these property owners, if that's something we can do. I, I, I don't have, I'm not the attorney, so we have legal counsel. But if that's a, if that's a violation of that right, then we may be, you know, be intrusive in, in that property owner's right. I do agree that I think they would see that this is a, an issue that causes a lot of secondhand smoke. I understand how someone can smoke, the wind blows it out. I grew up around chain smokers in my family and I can assure you that that secondhand smoke does become obnoxious, but at the same time, it's, it's very unhealthy. How we go from here, I mean, if we bring it on the agenda, it, it may be just to give us direction or tell us whether or not we can as a body take action to, to, against any, any property owner. I, I, I think Councilmember Gallegos might have alluded to that and she, she may be right. But again, we can certainly bring that back and give you an answer. And if this body would at least, you know, entertain that, I, I wouldn't mind bringing it back as an agenda item just to give us direction whether or not we as a body can even entertain that. I would encourage to my colleagues' points that you do bring it to the county and make it aware to all other organizations, not just the agencies here. You have the Community Action Partnership. You have other different organizations that work in collaboration to the Public Health Department. I think awareness is probably the biggest thing because it is affecting the school, for example. What is the school? How can the school get involved? You know, how it affects their kids. I, 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 I wouldn't want that for my children and I wouldn't want that for you. So if this body can do anything to assist, may not be to enforce it, but if we can assist to help, make it more aware, then I'm open for that. But I don't know, can we get something back? Legal counsel to see if there's even anything we can do as a city to enforce. I don't think we can enforce that.
Need to continue before, and then to put that on the next item F?
Yes, so we're on the conversation, so.
So from a legal perspective, if there's a majority of the City Council who would like to place it on the agenda for an update as to a future item as to what legal options are available, you can do that. Another option is to have a confidential email sent to you as to what can and can't be done with regards to apartments. And then the council can decide at that point whether or not they want to put it on the agenda. I will preliminarily flag for you, there are certain limitations. However, when the City Council did update its smoking ordinance in 2019, as compared to many other jurisdictions, it is quite robust and it did provide for a mechanism where you could not only have private parties enforcing it, but it also provided for a mechanism where apartment owners could voluntarily agree to make their apartments non-smoking. And then anybody within those, those units could be able to enforce it. So your legal options are take no action at this time, set it for and a future meeting as part of an agenda item. As part of the request, when you do that, you can direct the City Attorney's Office to come back with a confidential memo for you or you could even make it a public memo if you were so inclined, but generally they're confidential memos.
I would be in favor of bringing it back and putting it on as an agenda item so we could have some educated, make an educated opinion as to how we proceed. So I would agree with Councilmember Rodriguez. If we could bring it back to an agenda, is that we could have an educated conversation?
There may be another comment, Ms. Mayor, but I, I.
Yes. Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to commend you on such a seamless presentation. You all did a wonderful job. Not only here, but also the community forums. I was able to attend one of them and I was really happy to see so much inclusion. All of this education was in both English and Spanish and also to hear the stories from a lot of community members that are directly impacted by this. My biggest concern was with cost recovery for enforcement. I would be comfortable with having a public memo. I think that that would be in full transparency to the public and then for us to have that kind of knowledge. As Councilwoman Gallegos mentioned, I think that with this being brought forth in the county, it would cover the city and I think it would help address that cost recovery question.
So, so correct me if I'm wrong, the city can take action on this and does not necessarily have to address it with the county? Within the city?
Ye- yes and no. There's different overlapping jurisdictions. So for example, county health regulates county health items. And so if there are specific county health enactments that are put into place, those would apply within the city, just for example, like county health requirements apply within a restaurant within the city. However, the city also can regulate certain things through its land use powers, like we would also do with a restaurant, for example. So we have certain, they're called police powers and we can regulate for certain public health, safety and welfare that has to be balanced out against certain constitutional and state rights that you have as individuals and as property owners. So do we have legal capacity in order to do some regulations? Yes. Are we necessarily the best path to do that? Depends on what you say is best, but county health does have a particular expertise and so you, you could go either direction. Or both, or neither. I don't know if that's helpful. I'm just giving you all your options.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. With that, I would like to do directions as Councilwoman Mejia suggested, a public notice that goes out to the public and council members.
Are you talking a public memo from the City Attorney? And that public memo would address the issue of the ability to regulate apartments and the ability to do cost recovery for that regulation? Were those the two things I heard?
Yes.
I'm seeing both of you nodding on that. Thank you. And there would need to be.
I will second that.
Four or about, okay.
Okay.
So we, Mayor, you can vote on that this evening if you're inclined to do.
No, actually, I'd rather agendize it and then we move forward with that as opposed to do a. You, you can do a memo, that's fine.
There's a motion and a second.
But I understand that, but that's, that's what I'm saying. So I would say no.
Still have to do, all those in favor.
So, I get, so the, the, now that there's been a motion on the floor, assuming there's not a substitute motion, what you would typically do is call for a vote and you just count the number of votes and if there's four members who'd like a memo, that can be done. However, there still can be a follow-up motion that says I'd also like this as an agenda item.
So at this point, there's, there's a motion by Mayor Protem for a memo and who is the second?
I was the second.
Councilmember Montes, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes.
So I would like to bring this back as an agenda item. So that we can get that, yes, you can, so that we can bring just any legal ramifications, just to get us clear. You know, I mean, I think, you know, this, this youth that really cares about our community and, and the safety and more, more importantly, our health. I mean, this isn't something against property owners, it's just to make our community aware what we, what, what kind of police powers we have and what we can and can't do. You guys be inclined to bring that back?
I would, I would say yes. I would, I would second the bringing it back as an agenda item. Can we, because we can then address all of the above, bringing it back and putting it on the agenda.
Through, through the mayor, even though I'm not a council member, it is an option as part of that motion to direct a memo to come back as part of the agenda item. So you have everything in one package.
We are, absolutely.
I don't know if that's the direction that most of the majority would like, but I.
Okay, I have a question. So once we have the memo at that time, we get the information and then we can bring it back on a council member report, right? Once we have that information, I think rather than do the memo and, and still bring it back, I mean, it just doesn't seem like.
You can do either one. So right now, there's been approval to do a memo. You could wait after you get the memo to decide whether to set it or you could choose to set it tonight and combine it with a memo so it'd be part of the agenda package.
And that's what I'm, that's what I'm, I'm in favor of doing. Is that correct?
That, that'll be perfectly fine if the council is fine with that as well. Oh, they're all right.
So Mayor, unless there's a substitute motion or another motion, it would be appropriate to take a vote at this time on, on that.
So could you read the motion again? Just to make sure that we're all understand what we're doing.
Excellent. The motion would be to set this matter to direct staff to come back and set this as an agenda item and to combine it with the report from the City Attorney's Office regarding the cost recovery and the ability to require apartments, police power authorities sort of memo attached to it.
I'll move to approve that.
So motion by Councilmember Rodriguez to agendize this item at a future meeting and have a, a report, a legal report from our city attorney, second by myself. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye? And the opposed, let's, let's take account. Let's do a, let's do a roll count. Please, Alicia, I'm sorry.
Yes. Mayor Protem Gallegos?
Nay.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes? Councilmember Evans is absent. Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with four yes votes, two no votes and one council member's absent.
Thank you very much and thank you for your patience. Thank you for.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that we also shared an educational packet with more information and also more information from the Public Health Law Center that shares more on equitable enforcement options that you can look into. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now close that item and go to Councilmember Reports, Council, Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. First thing I'd like to thank Public Works for the fire hydrant on Sunset and Schnorr. I've gotten so many phone calls and emails about that, so woo-hoo, excited to have that. The next thing I would like my colleagues to entertain our staff to look into a system of putting things on the agenda. The thumbs up is not really working. The button thing we tried to do, that didn't work. So the reason I'm mentioning that is because it is becoming something that our community is seeing that we are trying to do business here and then they're coming at us because they're seeing the nay or the yay vote. This way, it's some type of uniformal, then our staff's not asking who said yes, who said no. Do we have four fingers? That we just look like we're circus up here trying to figure out what we're doing. So I would like my colleagues to, I guess we're doing thumbs up right now, come up with a system that's more equitable and more, I should say, of a, of a even leadership kind of a, a atmosphere and it's not just throw up the hands and figure that out.
Clear like a Jeopardy deal, we press and we can see a lighter, no lighter.
Well, we did the buns, but that didn't seem to work, so. Thank you. And one last thing, if our attorney could give us an update on MCTC Measure T?
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. The, as you may or may not know, we have Measure T is moving forward, it's going to the Board of Supervisors. However, this Thursday after the agenda went out, the Citizens Initiative was provided to the County Elections Official. The County Elections Official has managed to look through all of the numbers and has determined that it does indeed qualify for the number of voters on the petition and will be moving forward to the Board of Supervisors this July sixteenth. Now, unless there is something woefully inadequate with the language of it or something else, which I doubt would be the case, they would be entitled to have that measure put on the ballot. they would be entitled to have that measure put on the ballot. That measure is basically a duplicate of the one that the City Council suggested to be placed on the ballot as well. However, unlike the City Council, Madera County Transportation Commission measure, this Citizens Initiative only requires 50% vote plus one. So the bar is much lower. The challenge that MCTC is facing right now and the Board of Supervisors is we now potentially have two virtually identical measures that are being proposed for the ballot. So MCTC will be holding a special meeting before July 16th when the county will be considering this. And my understanding is that staff will be presenting a resolution that will basically say to avoid voter confusion and having duplicate measures on the ballot that the, they'll defer to the Citizens Initiative, which has been brought by the community. As long as that is on the ballot, then the remaining one that was originally being proposed would not be on the ballot. That way, there will only be one item on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
That's it. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just wanted to thank everyone. I do want to just make everyone aware that tomorrow we, we, we will be holding a, well, the city will be holding a tournament, golf tournament over at the Madera Municipal Golf Course. But soon after in the afternoon, late afternoon, from five to nine, we will be hosting the, the Fourth of July fireworks spectacular. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the people that are involved in this. Most importantly, your city of Madera has been a big contributor, not only with fire and police, but also and, and making sure that we provided some of those donations to that. So with that, let me go ahead and just provide thanks. One of the items that came before us on our consent calendar was PG&E making a donation to that as well. Again, this is for the benefit of the community. Again, trying to avoid people in blasting those illicit fireworks, but coming to a controlled area where it's free parking, free access to everyone, bring your lawn chairs. You guys will have a great time out there. I'd like to thank PG&E, Mid Valley Disposal, Link's Ranch, Baguundo Sterry Farms, Embark Madera, Sax Guns, County of Madera, Spencer Enterprises. We have CAGLA Environmental, Alice Shire in Windsor, thank you so much, Shannon. Span Construction and I said the City of Madera, again, this is in partnership through all your service clubs, Greater Madera Kiwanis, which myself and the mayor are part of. You have the Evening Lines with the Councilwoman Gallegos and you have the Noon Rotary. So this is a really big effort, collaborative effort in trying to make this happen. Our city manager being a big part of that, this city also granted up to a certain amount if needed. At the time, I'd like to report back that we should have enough and again, we'll have a successful fireworks show. The invitation is open to all. Our district fair, five to nine, you'll have food vendors. You'll have games for kids. It'll be hot, but bring your lawn chairs and enjoy a show later that evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Councilmember Montes.
Oh, I just want to say thank you to all staff for everything you're doing for your patience with us. I, I think I, I misread the agenda and thought it was going to be about a 15, 20 minute meeting. I was, I was a little off, but no, thank you everybody for your patience in public as well. It's kind of fun to see how things get done up here and hopefully everybody has a good, safe and sane Fourth of July.
Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to thank staff and specifically City of Madera Parks and Community Services Department. Thank you so much for your support and everything that you do, especially the diversity, the variety in youth programs this summer. I think that's really wonderful, seeing all of the kids out in the pool, being part of these programs and recently the free drawing to help children waive fees. That, that was really wonderful and I appreciate your support. And it's also great to finally have a date for the installation of the playground. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Vegas.
Thank you, Mayor Santiago Garcia. I just wanted to say last Sunday, I attended to the final of Madera Soccer League's first division and second, and second division. And the second division, we have Costa Chica with first place and a team from El Salvador, second place. Costa Chica first place. And first division, we have this team, I call it Med Town and this team has won four seasons, four seasons, four titles in a row. So very good team. Madera has spent with the soccer sport and all levels. They got the children's, little leagues, whatever. So that's very good and that was a lot of people, so that was fun. That's my report.
Thank you very much, everyone. Please come out and join us for the Fourth of July at the, at the Madera Fairgrounds. This meeting is now adjourned. Our next meeting date is July the 7th and the August 17th. Thank you very much. It is now eight fifty-four.
We expect tomorrow.